Okay, good evening everyone and welcome to the town board meeting of January twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-four. We have been in executive session and now we are going to open our work session. May I have a motion?
So long.
And the second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Uh, so before we start, I would like to make a comment um for just a little, a little bit. Um, I want to point out that this Saturday, January twenty-seventh is International Holocaust Remembrance Day. And it's a day that was established by a United Nations General Assembly Resolution to commemorate the liberation of concentration camps during World War Two. And the purpose of the day is to honor the death of the six million Jewish victims along with millions of others who were killed during the Holocaust. And in addition to remembering the past, the resolution underscores the importance of education to prevent Holocaust denial and genocide. So memories of, of the Holocaust are still somehow fresh with us today. With a recent terror attack on October seventh, uh, with a brutal and inhumane killing of Israeli citizens, which constituted the largest killing of Jews since the Holocaust. And perversely, this has led to a surge in antisemitism and the denial of Israel as the Jewish homeland. Recognition of Israel as the Jewish homeland was in response to the Holocaust. And so it is an ironic state of affairs. So I want to say pertinent to what's gone on in our town that this is not a time or a day to make a show of one's opinions. Holocaust Remembrance Day is a day of mourning and reflection, and it's a time to honor the memories of all those victims and to acknowledge the continuing pain of those memories which has been augmented by fresh atrocities. And likewise, there's never a time to associate with and invite groups that support terror and incite violence against any group or nation. This is never welcome here. So I will say that I will continue to hope for the best in each and every one of us in caring for and understanding and respecting one another. Also, I want to add, I want to remind everyone that January thirty-first is the International Holocaust Remembrance Day Commemoration at Chapak where Holocaust survivor Leo Ullman will share his story as a hidden child and sponsored by the Student Club Enough and the Holocaust and Human Rights Committee. So I hope many of you will attend. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we will now um start off with our work session. We have um, we have PACE with us, PACE and Nexus for our community visioning project. We're going to be looking at what we can do with our town-owned lands surrounding the train station. And we're very excited to work with PACE and Nexus. And we will be working today on um how we reach out to our community on, on planning these engagement sessions because letting people know to get as much engagement as possible is a really important part of this process. So I want to welcome all of you and thank you for your patience. And I will, at this point, I will give you the floor.
I'll just first say thank you and it's um good to see everyone and appreciate um your remarks. Appreciate also the Zoom room for today abilities, given the weather. So appreciate all of that. And uh, we are excited to um share with you sort of our next steps um and, and thoughts for the public engagement effort. Um, I'm gonna turn it over to Anastasia, but her and I'll sort of just um co-lead this. Um, but we want to begin really by sharing, you know, some of the um deliverables, I would say, um, and initial sort of kickoff um promotional uh ideas and material that go along with what we're going to be doing. So Anastasia.
Yes, so um, hi everyone. So the, the idea, I'm gonna share my screen in a minute, but I'll just like tease this out for like sixty seconds more for anticipation. Um, so the idea of what we're about to show you is we're gonna use the website um that was created as our main talking point. Because in order to, we wanted, as you guys had requested, the process of the community visioning um is to be inclusive, diverse, and to get as much engagement as possible. So the goal behind all the marketing is to represent that as well and to make sure that that, that the branding and the communication is also inclusive and diverse. So in a lot of ways, the website's going to live as your hub of this information um in order to store um feedback and, or communicate when everything is happening um and keep kind of the communication open. Uh, so let me share my screen. Okay, so can you guys see my screen okay?
Yes.
Um, I have a little bit of a weird kind of shadow, so I'm just making sure you guys see everything. Okay, so um, the idea of the website again is to create a very open, like here's all of your information, this is what we're doing. So right when you get to the landing page, you have a map of the area. You have the logo, you have exactly what we're doing. We're filling in our future with the town lands surrounding the Chapakwa train station, right? Straight ahead, um, we have the events right below. I'll let Tiffany's gonna jump in and talk about those. Um, and then we have, this, this top bar will fill as the process goes on, but at first we'll have the, I'll show you this page later. But they'll have this attend uh page, which will contain all of the workshops and all the information and how to register. Um, and then also meeting recaps and some other things as again we go along. You also up here, I could, we can add however many languages you want. I just for now just put English and Spanish, but this will translate um your website immediately for anybody who needs it translated. Um, you also have an ADA accessible um plug-in here that allows um anybody with, anybody to navigate the website as they need to.
That's our core, right? For all of our websites.
Yeah.
That sounds really great.
Yeah, no, that was, that was an important, um, that was an important aspect. Thanks so much for, for addressing that.
And we'll, we'll think about what other languages we can put in there.
Yeah, we could put whatever you guys, you can give me what, Adam. Um, the, this also, this plugin comes with a certificate that I will, will provide you that states that you are ADA compliant, and it scans every week to make sure any adjustments made or anything like that continues to keep ADA compliance um for the website and any information on the website. So everybody can be able to use it, whether they need it read to them or however it is. Um, okay, so before I continue through, Tiffany, you want to use the website to talk about our process in general here?
Yeah. So, yeah, so I'm gonna dive deeper into um at least one of these events, the one that's on April twenty-ninth, a little um further into the presentation. Um, but you'll see laid out essentially what we're planning on doing for the engagement with the community. We'll have an interactive walking tour, which again I will go into in detail in a little bit on April twenty-ninth, that'll start at Town Hall. Um, we will have two different engagement, uh, two uh engagement workshops that mimic each other, I should say. So the content will be the same, May sixth and May fifteenth. Um, and we have already secured our location for that. And then um we'll be a part of, and we will pop up, let's say, at the multicultural festival um on May eighteenth um with our staff so that anyone that is at that um festival can also participate in case they were not going to come to our engagement workshops or the interactive walking tour. Um, and then finally, what we are trying to set up is some type of engagement session at the Chapakwa train station. Um, that's to make sure that we do get the perspective of commuters coming, you know, of course, um, heading to the city or heading to other destinations and coming home. Um, and um, you know, we did have some conversations with the MTA. We are a little restricted with what we can do, um, but we are planning on something um that will take place pretty much around your train station. Um, and uh, we'll secure what that, you know, what that will look like um in the coming weeks. Um, and so that's essentially the, the um places that people are gonna be able to participate. They'll see online and be able to involve themselves in. Um, an important component that we're gonna also share with you, which is nice too, is that we'll be able to um have people pre-register. So I'm gonna turn it to Anastasia now to walk you through the rest of the website and then we'll come back and talk more in detail about the, the walking tour.
Um, Tiffany, uh, can I mention something since we're talking about May? Just to let you know, the farmer's market opens in May, I think it's May first. Does anyone know, but they're from May through mid-December.
Yeah, and maybe we, we can do is, um, you know, what we've done at other farmer's markets to make it real simple is just this, like a poster board, we call them, um, of engagement where people can just sort of come to a poster board and um participate, and then we are able to collect responses. So that, and that we can keep up at the farmer's market. Um, so great, yeah, thank you.
Okay, great.
So the fourth is the first Saturday. I, I don't know if they open before another day. I think it's usually after.
Well, it's early May.
Okay, yes, absolutely, absolutely.
Um, and I'm curious, what locations did you find for the workshops on May sixth and May fifteenth?
Uh, whereas, we're gonna, those, both will be at the school, at Bell School.
At Bell, okay, that's a good location.
Yeah.
Okay.
We, we want people to still be in the, right in the vicinity of our, um, of our area, of the, of the sta, station area. And it provides us also the opportunity to break out into different rooms because sometimes it can get a little loud in one room altogether, so.
Okay, and did you say that those two would be at different times of day, like one morning, one evening?
No, we kept them both in the evening.
Are those, okay.
Because we don't have access to the schools during the day.
Right.
Okay, unless it's a Saturday, are those weekdays?
There, there, one is a Monday and one is a Wednesday.
Okay.
I have a question about the walking tour. Is there gonna be a maximum number of people that can attend that? And is there, if too many people register, would, would we add more?
So um, well, I, I think what we want to try to do is right now, our assumption is we will be able to, each of us probably ho, hold twenty to twenty-five people in our group as we walk. I, I know that sounds a bit insane, but we could do that if needed. Um, and we, what is more important is, I think, figuring out how many facilitators we'll need. So we can continue to grow as long as I can begin to bring in more facilitators and then break them into smaller groups. And even if we're all at the same site, when I talk about this, um, we're not physically in the same, it's spot. We can, you know, break apart and be able to hear from your private group.
Okay.
Yeah, but we'll watch the numbers for sure.
Okay. Perfect, so um, I'll just walk you through the rest of the kind of programming with that, within the website and what the website can do. Um, and then we'll, we'll, we'll quote-unquote "and", end with um Tiffany diving into the walking tour when we get to that event page. Um, okay, so as you scroll through, so the idea is exactly what you guys just experienced is boom, all the information is upfront, they understand the programming upfront, they, they can scroll down here and all of this language is from uh the communication document that you guys um edited and we, we edited alongside you. So this is everything you've seen, there's nothing new here. If there is one or two new things, I will show them to you, but for the most part, you know, ninety-nine percent of this is what you guys had seen and approved. So this is exactly what we're doing, this is how they can get involved. Um, everywhere possible that I could say, click here to attend. There, there are multiple opportunities for them to click and get to that, to the page where they can register and engage in. So you'll see that, and as we get more information on the site, I will continue to link all of those pages so that way, no matter who you are, where you're looking, you know, you can click, you'll click somewhere and get where you need to be. Um, so then when you scroll down, uh, this, this section is made to hold any questions that the public might have regarding initiative and the process. We can take these away, this is just what we started with, we could take these away, we could add as we go, if we see that people keep emailing you guys the same question or we keep getting the same question, we can add this on here. This is meant to be like a living, breathing um hub of communication for the process. So this, this section will update as necessary as we go through the process. You will see when you click here, this is our line from our um documents. And this is the one section, the, this is your one percent of content that has changed a little bit um to make sure that we know that there's a difference. Um, the parcels of land, this is from here. I'll show you these clicks in one second, I'm just gonna open all these up first. Um, and do you have to register to attend? It's not required, but we really want them to, so they can click here to get there. And if they have a question um that they don't see here, I'll show you all that. So that's the idea of this, that it opens up and that they can, they can find any information they need. So when we go to the parcels of land that are included, if they click here, they will go to this map that shows, it's a very, this is a very detailed map showing all this area so they can see what areas are included. Um, and again, this is another section where if they click here, it takes them to where they can sign up and look at the events. Um, if they want to register attend, we're gonna head over to that page in a second. They can click there. And then if they have a question that's not listed, if they click this, it will take them here and they can fill out this information and this can go to whoever you guys wanted to. It will come in and say question, you know, from the envisioned website. Um, and whatever it is that they receive, that, that person can filter whatever it is they want. They'll, um, so that's what this one, that's what that one does. Uh-huh. Okay, so now I'm gonna head over to, everybody good? Any questions?
I like, no.
I think it looks great.
Yeah, it looks good.
Um, I think it's an, it's an attractive look, it's colorful and it's easy.
Yeah.
It's easy to navigate, clear.
I, I agree, I think this is great.
Yeah, and I like that the FAQs are, are fluid.
Yeah, 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 and whatever, you know, right, it's meant to be, it's meant to be. Um, so now I'm gonna head over to the, the attend section, which is where I said they can literally get there from anywhere on the website. Um, so this is again, language from ours, your voice matters. This is from the, and as you scroll down, each of the events are in this list. Um, and then I'll, I'll, I'll talk through this in one second 'cause I, I don't wanna spoil Tiffany's, so um, uh, talk about the walking tour. But when you go in this, they can register for the event inside. I've also created, and maybe, you know, looking at this, maybe we bold it, but um, they can also register in case they, you know, I don't know, don't see it. They can also click here and it will take them to that page too. So um, again, anywhere they know to register, we will make sure that they see that pop up. Um, okay, so I'm just gonna head back, but this is where all these sessions will live and where they can get, um, go into each one and find more information. But again, I'm not gonna show you that until we're ready for Tiffany to walk through. Um, so you have your map, you have your questions, uh, and just making sure that I've brought everything for you. Oh, and then the other page is the, this review and meeting cap, recaps. So, you know, uh, this is just a placeholder for now, but we can, we can go live with this or remove it. But the idea is that um, that the public knows that any information, you know, summary from each of the sessions will be here. Um, so you know, we're filling this out, bookmark this page, oh, this is your other one percent, you know. Um, it will be used to convey clear summary notes from each of our outreach sessions is to learn more in attended sessions, click here. Um, so the idea of this is that way, this will be built with session one, walking session recap notes, you know, so that way, everybody feels like um they're involved and they know what's going on. So that's what this page is meant to do when we get there. Um.
I really like that, so people are not left out, they're not there, they can go and they can see exactly what happened.
Exactly, yep.
Anastasia, I have one question. It doesn't look like there's an, like something that takes someone back to the homepage on every screen. Will that be, is that intentional or is that going to be something you add?
So yeah, so that's a good catch. Um, that's a, uh, you caught me trying, uh, having an internal debate about that. Um, so, um, so there is, so there is a way for them to go back. So I liked this kind of really narrow, you know, way and having this large, which is why I, on the internal pages, I was thinking of having a home right here that they would click through. So this page wouldn't have it, but the other ones would have it, where it just say home right here. Um, but when you go to these pages, the home is this button, it will take you back there.
Okay.
The vision, the vision.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I like that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Makes sense. Hopefully you.
People need to know that.
Yeah, yeah, well, I guess if you.
We need some descriptor.
Yeah.
I thought.
If you roll over, you'll figure it out.
I would, I mean, I would click on it, but that doesn't mean everybody would.
Right, yeah.
It's sort of a standard though for webpages that you click on the title and it takes you back to.
But I didn't see it on one of the pages, which is I think why I, what prompted.
Yeah, you did, yeah, like you, you did catch it, it's on the internal.
Wow, right. Well, watch. Yeah, well, we have to.
Seriously.
It's not the last page, is that what you're on?
So the, the other thing is if we um, we will have, um, you know, we will see people in the analytics, see people, how they're engaging. If we see that it looks like people are lost based on the data, we will have to make sure, you know, we write home up here or if we need to do it. Um, if it seems like they can't, they're not finding their way back. Um, but yes, that was an aesthetic decision, I liked it without it, so, um, yes. Okay, so I think that's the main core. I have more to show you, but I think um we should, we should jump over to Tiffany's um uh, walking tour. And, and so I'm gonna click here and I give her the stage.
Okay, thanks Anastasia. And um, okay, so for um April twenty-ninth, we start, thought to kick off with this um concept of the walking tour of the parcels. And um, you know, as everyone knows, I think sometimes it can be important to just feel the space and the location. Um, and also it sometimes can be interesting for people to hear from planners and architects and those, right, who uh do this on a daily, you know, everyday basis, like how sometimes even we look at space. And so we're gonna be able to like, you know, um, to talk about questions or um tee up questions for people to think about and consider. And so what our, our thought would be was to start at Town Hall. We would um begin with a presentation and have the um, uh, you supervisor, you know, do some welcome and introductions of this process. Um, and then turn it over to our team where we would just give a very short presentation of some of exciting placemaking ideas, right? Of just like what others might be doing, how other places are looking. Um, and that's again, just to provide a little bit of excitement um and possibility. Um, and then we would um start on our walking tour. Um, we have done these before, so we're gonna be able to split people up accordingly. Um, the residents would then uh be paired with a facilitator um and actually a student who will be taking notes along uh the tour, so we don't miss anything. Everybody will actually get one of these maps as well. Um, and we will have a QR code where people can participate as well through their phones as they're going through the walking tour, so.
I'm gonna show that.
Oh, okay, perfect. So I'll pause there for one second while we show that.
It's just on the backend, so I just gotta get you guys back there, 'cause it's not live yet.
So essentially, each person that participates through their phone while they're on the tour um would have a page, the page would come to this, and they can take notes or add their suggestions as, as well as our, you know, participate vocally. Um, and our students will take notes. So we'll be capturing a ton of different feedback um for each of the facilitated um groups. Um, so, and so again, don't need to have a phone, we will also be there taking all the um comments that come in. Um, what we'll ha, what we will do is each team, let's call it, will start at a different location. So you see these different locations on your map, one through four B. Um, so let's pretend you're on my tour and we're gonna start at Town Hall. Um, we will physically, as a group, stand outside of that area. Um, and we're gonna talk just simply about Town Hall. Um, you know, what are some of the needs of Town Hall? What potentially, um, you know, that space is being used for? Um, we will look around, sort of noting, um, you know, the, the playground, the basketball court, the current recreation that's there, and just talk about it's, how it's adjacent to other spaces and, and maybe how it serves again, you know, how, what does it serve? What's the purpose that it serves in that location specifically? Um, and then again, we will um tee up a few questions that we might, you know, flag for them to think and consider potentially, ideas, do they have alternatives, so on and so forth. From location one, we will, we will then walk over um to parking lot C, D, um and B, and we'll stand in that spot. Um, and from there, again, we're gonna emphasize sort of the size of the parking lot, when the parking lot's used, when it's not used, when do people see it empty, you know? Is it empty, sort of getting people's perceptions of that space? Um, and then how it serves as that transition area, right? And um, and what, then again, what would people imagine that space to be? And then the environmental potential sensitivities of that area. So um, again, teeing up different things in that spot. In location number three, which is the train station and memorial circle, we will point that out. Similar type of exercise, um, again, that transition space, how does it connect to um your, you know, the downtown area, what does that walk feel like? Um, and um discuss, you know, parking lot A, the bridge, the Conifer Building, um, the height of those buildings, we'll be talking about what, how does that space make you feel? What is that height, you know, uh, do they realize how tall that building is? Um, and just point out some of the, the features um on, at pin three. Um, location four, um, A is the main train station parking entrance. And again, uh, what purpose it serves, the opportunities there, uh, so on and so forth. You're getting, I guess, the drift here. And then finally, four B, uh, will be at the school parking lot and church, and then looking towards the recreational field and how that might tie into that street perspective. Um, and um, again, sort of turning ourselves around back to Town Hall. Um, so this is certainly a, a, you know, we can accomplish this. Um, it might certainly take us, uh, um, you know, if, if our presentations were assuming go about, you know, twenty to thirty minutes, we'd have an hour and a half to do this. And if we ran a little longer, I think that's gonna be, it'll be okay. Um, so I, we'll all start again at different locations, so, um, and then we will time it accordingly wherever, you know, where every few, you know, ten, fifteen minutes, we all move and walk to our next location. Um, and that's the walking tour that we thought would be a nice way of understanding the space a bit better um and having people visualize a little bit more some of the concepts that, you know, um, are out there. What that feeds into as well is I think it's a good opener um for then where people are not having to walk, but those other meetings that we would, we would have at Bell School where it would be more of a facilitated dialogue about the opportunities and. Where it would be more of a facilitated dialogue about the opportunities and challenges and space and. And ideas that people have for that, this, these spaces. Um, but we thought, again, this would be the good, the, the launch of the process.
Would you, would you have a rain date?
We, so we were gonna, we, we wanna talk about that.
Just in case it's torrential, I, I, I realize we could go in a drizzle.
I like to, yes, we could, we certainly can have a rain date as we get closer. Uh, what's nice here is the fact that it's not the Bell School that is town hall, so we just really have to work within. The schedule of the town hall, um, so there's more opportunities, but we can make, we can either, uh, you know, decide that now, a rain date. Or maybe just hold tight and see how we're doing as we get closer to the date.
Think we put, put a rain date now because scheduling is so difficult. And we want people to be able to plan and to.
So I, I would do it.
Okay.
Yeah, no, I don't just, I don't disagree with the, with the rain date. Um, but I'm wondering about the choice of a Monday at five o'clock, um. I'm just, one, I think the parking lot can be very, very busy at that time of the day. Um, and then I'm also wondering, are we really getting the people who are in the city? Are we only getting the people who work from home on Mondays potentially available?
So we.
Or, or should it, or, or have we thought about a weekend when? Yeah, I'm, I'm just, I'm worried about how busy the parking lot will be and the population that we're missing. Yeah.
I think the, the thing is, is not, when we do these events, right? Not everyone can attend everything and that's why I think the walking tour, we are lining it up. To a, a time and date that it then, again, works for us to use your town hall space and to walk this area. You're right, not everyone can attend the Monday night walking tour.
I'm worried that there's a built in bias, but. The people who commute, that we, we build in a bias by making it at a time that a commuter basically could not do.
Let me ask you, is, is there a reason why you can't do Saturday?
I actually don't know if it, we have done events on the weekend, they are not highly attended. Because people have school, kids' activities, it's something that most people don't wanna participate in on the weekend. But notice like when you're watching the, like, what we're trying to accomplish here is you'll have this event. You have another evening event that's stationary, again, maybe you attend that one, which we will share what happened here. We will walk people through this same type of exercise as well, um, through our stations and our tables and our maps. And if you can't attend that one, that's again, why we have the pop-up type of, um, experience. And we'll have for the commuters coming in, that, that train station, remember date that, uh, Anastasia marked. Where we'll have an experience for them, where we are there specifically for them. So it's just a mo- it's just different dimensions, like we won't always hit everybody at each event.
So, so three points, uh, sort of follow up on Holly. Um, five to seven o'clock on Monday, you're gonna be dodging traffic and people are miserable as is because we have a tight train station. No one's gonna wanna see their neighbor, anyone walking, crossing, blocking me to get home to my family, I mean. It gets a little rambunctious when people wanna leave that train station. So, and you're gonna be dodging traffic within the train station itself, let alone, you know, uh, Greeley Avenue. So I think that's a really difficult time, number one, number two, um, if you did it on a weekend, I don't know if it's feasible. Child, but with Ike, but we have the rec field and if there's no sporting events that are in the season at that time. Is it possible to host something on the rec field so people with families can come and drop their kids off on the rec field for. Jumping around, whatever it may be, so the kids could be using the rec field and parents can feel free to walk around. And then the last but not least, uh, when you're talking about the spaces, uh, you know, they've transformed within reason. So people should understand what the, what was a rec field fifty years ago, what was, you know, for people who recently moved here. We didn't have the basketball court and playground, um, we had the playground, but not what it is today, we still didn't have the basketball court. So that they understand how it has evolved and it has been stagnant in different ways. So they can appreciate the change we've gone through, so those, those three things sort of just popped up in my head.
Yeah, and maybe, I mean, one of the things, just to comment on that, so, I mean, if we don't host on a mundane night, right? I mean, there is that eighteenth date that is the cultural, um, the heritage. I mean, what we could do is that we start with this, we can move ourself, like, we, then we physically after doing this. Can move ourselves over to that event, um, or time it where we're just, again, doing this. And then heading over to the cultural, um, event for our separate pop-up. Um, or promoting it at the cultural event and then having people come either way. So we could do it on that Saturday, I'm, I'm open to that for sure and hopefully the rest of my team is as I speak. And then, um, I think, um, yeah, just like you were saying, I mean, I'm not getting into the details now. But sort of as we script this, um, though, all of our facilitators would be talking a little bit about. You know, working with Sabrina, some of the quote, history of that site. And then some of the, you know, potential restr- you know, like constraints. And then still opening it up for that dialogue, so it's giving everybody a little bit of, of all of that, yeah.
Wait, so Tiffany, so if you move the walking tour to the eighteen, would you still then do the engagement workshops before the walking tour?
Again, all of them, like, I, I mean, they're all fun and they're all different. So I was using this just to get if people wanted to go on this and felt that they needed to participate even more. Then they get the time to come to the other engagement sessions. Um, but I think it's, it all, it all works, like, cause even if we open on the week, um. With the community set, visioning sessions that are at Bell School, I mean, we can still walk through with them and, and promote this, right? So we can think about that, I'm also, again, I would happy to look at calendars with everybody. If we wanted to try to do it the Saturday before, um.
But if we did a ver- a link to a virtual tour too. Do one, have somebody do like a walkthrough, point out all the spots, mention maybe some of the things Jeremy was saying. And then throw that on the website too, so that way whoever wasn't able to participate in, in person. Or a self-walking tour perhaps, where somebody could, you know, read, read kind of the spiel at each spot, walk themselves around.
Yes.
Yeah, that's interesting.
Yeah.
No, no, I just, just one thought before I lose it, and that is that although, um, commuting clearly is coming back. Um, our lot is really, uh, completely empty on Mondays, Mondays and Fridays. So I wouldn't be so, um, so concerned about, you know, uh, the, a bias against commuters. If you're doing something on Monday, you could take a look at the lot, it's, it's stunning.
When we were looking at the calendar, if we were to capture commuter input, it has to be Tuesday, Wednesday or Thursday.
Otherwise literally nobody's, nobody's at the train station on Monday or Friday.
Okay.
Yeah, so, so we, we looked at the dates and, and I think, you know, what Tiffany's trying to say is the same dialogue. Of what would be presented at the walking tour is going to be repeat, repeated in a different format, may perhaps. During the sessions, right, because it's important that people get the same information and have the same background. To provide their desires, you know, people will be biased and they're gonna say what they wanna say. But we need to provide an even keeled message throughout every session, so no session has an advantage over another session. And, you know, I really, and Tiffany, and maybe you can talk to, can we do some type of point and click in here on the website? To reflect the walking tour.
I was gonna, I, the idea of, of maybe even just recording what the facilitators are saying.
Using the QR code and just like the way you go up to in a museum and you hear about the picture, whatever, you just look around, tell me what your thoughts are.
I, I would love to explore something like that, so that way it doesn't even really matter what time it is, people can do it at their own convenience.
Yeah, right, but I guess I would say do what's most effective if it's following, you know, do, you know, following the facilitator around. And making that accessible or doing just a separate virtual tour, if that's kind of a neater and cleaner way for people to do it virtually. Um, is that I don't want it to be, I don't want it to feel disjointed because we're, you know, they're following a live. Well, that's why I. A video of a live event.
Well, so that's why I think why I was kind of thinking more like the audio tour idea. Where they listen at each point to the same thing the other people have heard, standing at the same spot, um.
So part, I will say, um, I'll let Anastasia comment, and again, I'm not sure what is our capabilities. Fully are in the sense and where we are in terms of our, our, I, we have to be cognizant of budget as well, so. But I would say, one of the things that I've done before that was very simple to do. Is that we would be able to certainly, and this worked well in one of my other communities, you print this map out, same map with the little one, two, three, four. The little, the descriptions are there, we ask like three questions underneath, very similar again to what the engagement workshop would look like. And people can either pick them up at town hall, they can print it out online. And you, you actually go on your own walking tour and fill it in, you can then use the QR code. And submit it back to town hall with a writing, just so that's something we can certainly do and I.
I love that, me too.
And people.
I think that's very good, yeah.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, so I could just, I'm gonna just jump in on that Tiffany and just say, in terms of like where we're at with time and budget. We could definitely do that in line and, you know, and put it hand in hand with the website. Uh, I think it was Holly that was saying, I do love the idea of like having. A little like lawn sign, say, in each of these stations with a QR code that somebody at any time could like scan. And hear the information on, but that would definitely be, we can do it, but that's definitely out, that would be like an additional scope. Um, but that's a cool idea, but what Tiffany said we could do, no problem. Uh, but, but yes, if you wanted like a lawn sign with a QR code, we could definitely do that, I've done it before. Um, scans it and then they hear.
How much does it cost?
I, I have gotta talk to everybody else, but.
Yeah, think about it.
Uh, but yeah.
When it, when it starts involving dollar signs, then maybe enough, but.
Yeah, so that would be, yeah, so that, that would just cost a little extra only because we'd have to, um, use a different audio software and things like that. Um, but it is possible, if you, if you feel strongly for that, we could, we could do it, um, but yeah, I just, just to add that on.
Yeah, I'd love to know. It's a very nice way to make it convenient for anybody who's really interested in doing it, to just do it at their own pace, Sunday morning when you're struggling to town with the dog.
Yeah, I, I really, I'd like to, I'd like to explore.
So one other, Anastasia, do you just wanna show the other like interactive way people are participating with the kids?
Yes, I was, I was, see a couple of things in our pocket, I wasn't sure, um, yes, let me move over there.
So just in the same spirit of like, right, people can now go online, they can print this out, they can do the walking tour themselves and, and read it. And then we also just thought it would be fun and a way to sort of.
Get out again.
What?
But I'm teasing it out again, I was waiting for you to say.
Okay, go ahead, you take it from here.
No, no, I was, I didn't, I didn't wanna, I wanted to open the screen as you revealed what you're.
Oh, okay, so we thought there could be, if you all were interested, a kid contest. Sort of get, drive people to the website and drive people to this whole experience. And talk, you know, have some type of coloring contest for kids to participate in. And maybe if the town can do it, they select, we select a winner and they receive a free ice cream from one of your local places. And in here, we will have not only like obviously three-year-olds just color it in. But we'd actually have a little, for the older kids, some message on here about actually filling it in with uses, right? With what they would, if they could, right, build anything or do anything. And we might get some crazy responses, of course, but just getting them interested in your town and in town government and how this works. And hopefully get their parents interested and you could put these all up around town hall afterwards to share and showcase. So the winners you could put up, but we thought this could be a nice way of getting people excited.
Yeah, so the interactive part of this too, um, there are multiple ways we can do this, but if you guys liked this idea. Uh, what we would do is this QR code would take them to a page on the website. That, sure, they could take this and they can draw on this, or we'll have printable PDFs of this map that they can fill in. Of our larger maps, so they can understand the space and of our logo to color that in. And then like the rules, like if you're three, you're gonna, you're gonna be in a different division than if you're twelve. Um, so we'll have a page, if you guys like this idea, there will be a, a landing page to kind of hold all that information for them. And, um, to get them excited.
How about instead of, um, picking a winner, which is always hard with kids and then who's gonna decide? How about just offering to have, um, just a rolling, a rolling view of every, everybody's submission? Like you could go on the website and they could see that their submission is being advertised and it.
We could do. Could also just put everyone, we do a random draw for.
I was just gonna say, we could also just.
I don't know, maybe we could get an ice cream truck and give ice cream to everybody now, hopefully.
Now, those are dollar signs.
That'll bring people to on my walking tour for sure.
Yeah, what happened with that?
Yeah, have they called the kid, the kids, the group, they've made a poster since feedback?
Right, yeah, I don't know what happened to it.
But we could do.
Yes, yes. Because.
We're talking about, we're talking about ice cream and then putting it all on the website.
You can buy ice cream, adults buy it.
But we might have adults who might wanna.
We definitely have adults who want to draw.
There's a reason definitely do. Coloring books are a thing.
Well, I, I, I like the idea of kids', uh, submissions just being on the, on the website.
I like that.
You know, kind of scrolling through and.
Definitely.
So they'd be happy to see that their, their artwork is there, everybody can see.
Friesbies we have, um, from the community day, Christina.
Maybe just the incentive.
Selections and we could, frisbees, we have a lot of giveaways from.
We have giveaways, yeah. And maybe we could do a lottery for ice cream.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, you could, you could probably do, they do in, in our library, library in town for any book a kid reads or something like that. That, that gets submitted as their take, as their like raffle ticket, so like.
Yes, that, that's what I mean, for every kid who submits one of these, then we do a lottery and something like that, it'll be random.
Yeah, that's how our library does the kids summer reading too.
Yeah.
That's cute, okay.
I think that's much better than us saying, this one is the best and yours is not.
Yeah, we can do that, that makes.
Totally fine.
Yep.
Yeah, I'm a fan of random for that too.
Okay, um, I'll just show you the other flyers, um, that we made that you guys can print out. And show around, the idea is not that you need to pick one or the other, but they could be used for multiple items. Like you can, you can use them for whatever you want, so I'm just gonna scroll up there here. So this one is just the map huge, this one is meant like, here are your dates. Here's, you know, here's our map, this is our, well, this is just an exciting kind of like, here's everything right up front. QR code goes straight to the website, um, here's our website, here's our handle, here's our hashtag. Then when you come down, this one is just more informative, the map is smaller. And this has more language from the communication document, talking about like what the purpose is. Why we need to hear from them, um, that's the idea of this one. So we'll, we would send these to you and you, you know, you can.
But also hand them out to farmers market, I, I think that's a great idea of staying there. I'm, I'm waiting to hear from Wendy when their first date is, but just to let you know, I spoke with Ike. Um, the adult softball season starts on April fifteenth and games are Monday, Tuesday, Thursdays. And Newcastle baseball softball uses the field on Wednesdays and Fridays and they do, they do do scheduling around the Holocaust Memorial ceremony. But once April fifteenth comes, that, those fields are very, every single day, so. Doesn't mean that we can't do something somewhere else, but just keep that in mind.
Okay. Um, the other thing I just wanted to discuss with you guys is. Um, the other thing I just wanted to discuss with you guys is um, part of our marketing package um, in our proposal to you and in our scope, was to give you a couple of social media posts. And forgive me for asking this, but see, there is, I, I know there's a Facebook page. Um, is there an Instagram page? Cause I want to format these for you in the right-
We managed?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, we only have a Facebook page.
Okay.
We can have an Instagram page, I don't know.
But we don't have a, a formal town Instagram page.
Okay.
So right now, we just have a town Facebook page.
Okay.
And our municipal website that we would love this to-
Instagram and Facebook can be basically synced up. Um, and I would say that they hit different groups of people for the most part. Instagram tends to skew younger and Facebook older. So I would say if we can create one and we, we can, someone's managing it, if they're already managing Facebook, then-
Who's managing Facebook?
That's, I don't know.
Well, we should, we should have-
Vicky's been posting on it for a while, um, I think a lot.
I didn't notice any posts by the town, I only noticed the ones by your um-
Well, right now, only the newsletter is getting posted on the town page. And then I post on my town super, my own town supervisor page.
Right.
Okay. So well, I'll make graphics for Facebook, I'll also make some for Instagram if you guys decide to start that, that's easy enough.
Okay, that sounds good, thank you.
Sizes for, um, and also I'll make, since you said for the town website, I'll also make, you know, a, a placeholder that you can use as like an icon that says, you know, this and what this is and some dates. Um, so we'll put together a package and we'll, we'll email the, of those to you of all the various marketing sizes and logo and all of that that you can use um, in your various digital platforms.
Okay, and we'll let you know, um, as far as, we like the idea of the, the questions, you know, if there's a question a member of the public wants to ask and it's not on our website so far, if we haven't answered. Um, we'll, we'll let you know who those questions should go to. Sabrina for certain, um, but we'll figure out how wide that distribution should go.
Um, I, you know what, and you just reminded me of a, a feature of the website, not tell you what it does, um, so thank you. Yeah, um, the, let me just take you here real quick. Um, so when we, when you go into, when they register each of the events, we'll have their own registration spreadsheets. So um, we will, we will have a sheet for each event showing um, who is registered and that they've confirmed that they are resident, um, and they will be checked. Um, and we will check them off and we'll have a both digital and hard copy um, attendance record.
So we're just asking them to confirm that they're, they're Newcastle residents?
Here, yes, so we're, we're looking for their first name, their last name, their emails. So that way, you know, any updates, we will send them any emails that we need to or anything like that. Uh, and then, um, yes, we need them to confirm that they, they need to participate and confirm that they are resident. So, um, yes, and we will, we'll be checking them in and there'll be a, a registration uh-
So, um, I mean, do we want to open this up to our merchants in town? Do we want to-
Yeah, I'm not sure that residents only-
Well, we're talking about what we want to do with our town-owned land.
Right, but if you're a, if you are-
If you're a merchant.
If you're a merchant, you don't, your property owner is supposed to a resident.
Right, what's, it's just more input, so you don't, what's the worst case scenario?
Yeah.
Discard it for lack of a term or you don't?
Well, don't you want to invite them?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
But, but this is saying residency only, so you-
Residents or property, residents or merchants.
Yep.
I don't, I don't-
Property?
I'm not even sure that I would want to limit it to residents. I would want to limit it to people who have a vested interest. There may be people who technically are pleasant built, but this is their town and I mean, just because not everything will be used by them. The people that we're drawing into town are relevant. I don't, I mean, like especially the sports, I don't think-
No, I don't think so.
Yeah, I, I, I understand what you think, I don't, I really don't think-
They're not paying for it either.
I don't think that people outside of our town who are not taxpayers should, should be, should be weighing in here. I don't think, the merchants, yeah, because they're here and they're providing value to our town and they're here-
Especially the long-term merchants, right?
And-
Some of these businesses have been here for so long.
Yeah.
And they're, and they witness, you know, what goes on commercially and we care about their needs.
They own a lot, they own-
But bringing in people from other towns now to weigh in on this, I think, I think is appropriate.
Well, no, I'm not, we wouldn't reach out.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't do it.
Well, what about now, would we want to include people who own property but don't actively live here?
You can say live or work. You can say live or work in this community.
Or, or the kids attend school, they, they live in Mount Pleasant, but they're, they're at the-
Live and work, yeah, I think that's a good, live and work in Newcastle.
I think that's, that's extra complicated.
And then if people can, if people are technically like one lot away, if they consider themselves living here.
They get the humps to be-
Yeah.
Yeah. Most, most of them do.
I don't know.
Well, I think it's a fuzzy-
Can we call you just live and work?
People that show up, they're going to be like, yeah.
Listen, I, I, okay, yeah, people can show up, I think it's a fuzzy line. I, I think it should be limited to our residents and merchants. Because otherwise, where do, where does the line end?
So, live and work here?
Yeah, live and work here.
I like live and work.
Work here, okay?
Yeah.
I mean, we're not gonna be verifying, so it's on our system.
Yeah, we're not verifying anybody, it's, it's just, I, I didn't want to be in a situation like that.
It's just information, but, but as a formal basis, I, I, I can't see telling people who don't have a vested interest here, who don't pay taxes, that they should come in and apply, you know, we do it by lines.
No, but, but they might anyways, right?
Oh, and they might, and they have in the past, and they know who they are. People always do, people come, we don't-
We don't restrict with the newsletter to residents.
Tell us what, what to do, tell us what they want, you know?
True.
So that's what we're gonna-
Okay.
I mean, there's no downside really, because as you say, you can just discard anything that feels-
Well, if you go-
I think the line becomes very fuzzy, I think it's just easier.
Just-
Live and work, I think if you-
Live and work, but if someone who happens to live in Mount Pleasant kills it out.
We're not gonna know, so it's, it's, yeah. Say how it's supposed to be, it's fine.
Yeah.
Right?
Okay, um-
That's, that's it, that's what we have. And um, Anastasia, is there any other questions we have for everyone? Or what we're gonna be doing is just sort of tightening everything up now and getting it ready to, to roll and getting it out there.
When do you expect to launch it?
I'm gonna leave that to Anastasia to make it a bit tighter up.
I was waiting to keep them with me or, um, I wasn't sure.
Um, you know what, I, I want to, hold on a second, I just want to take a step back. I think that people who send their kids to the CCSD are here all the time.
Mm-hmm.
So maybe those people would, would be formally included. So I kind of take that back, um, because their people, so I've-
I think live and work covers it.
I, 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 I think that is right, live and work is fine. So I, what I was hearing was a, was a very open invitation to anyone to, to participate. People from the city, people who might want to move here, I don't agree with that. But if they are people who send their kids to the CCSD but happen to live in, in Mount Pleasant, I would say that they're here quite a lot and they're part of, part of this community.
They're playing adult softball, they're taking the train from here, they're taking-
So, so I would let, I would let those people-
So I, I, I think you could say, live, live and work here, because they, they live here. We're not using the, in the tightest-
I think sufficient, I think, I, I think, I don't consider themselves living here, they're not.
Right.
I think into their self-residency.
Yeah, right. They, they don't, they really don't identify as Mount Pleasant.
Right, but I just want to make clear that-
Not to say anything wrong with Mount Pleasant.
No, no, not at all, I just want to make clear that those are the people who are included and not people from further away who don't, who don't have a next, feel next to-
Right, right.
But, but we're not gonna be able to really figure that out without making somebody go back and check each name that comes through.
But I, we can do that, that's, that's not even viable.
It's the owners, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, it's just, I don't think we need to worry about that.
Yeah, nobody put down that list.
Yeah, I like live and work, I think that's-
Yeah, it's how we advertise it.
Live or work.
Yes.
Okay. All right.
Great, so um, there was a question about launching.
Yeah.
When, when are we launching, Anastasia, Tiffany, who's answering that?
I, I, I will-
It's been really quiet.
I will, I will answer that. Um, so I can make all the edits that you guys have here today um, within the next week. And I think I will email them all to you guys, um, and then we can launch. I mean, really, we're here, so it's just a matter of uh, making sure that we have all the information that we need in terms of dates. I think that's the biggest thing, is making sure all that is good, that we're all good with all the dates and we have everything squared away, um, and if we need a rain date or anything like that, getting everything up. And then we can launch, I mean, we're right there, so all we have to do is just-
Yeah, I, I think I would like to, to take a stroll with um, Sabrina maybe on a Monday night from five to whenever it is we're gonna do, and actually see what the traffic looks like on that light day to make sure that we're not-
Yeah.
I also don't think that's a good day.
Yeah, you, you have that one of your Manhattanville shirts as opposed to a Pacey shirt on a Monday, you do five to seven if you mess with traffic.
Why don't, why don't you guys take a look?
We'll confirm that.
Right, I was gonna say, take a look, and let's, why don't we shoot for-
I don't have that, you, you have that as a meeting?
What's on that?
Yeah, I have to have the-
Yeah, I, I don't think that April twenty ninth date is gonna work. Um, we, we have to check a couple of things.
What's on, yeah, Michelle?
So, we're all-
Does the ceremony is that night?
Oh, no, that won't work. Yeah, we may not be able to do that date, the twenty ninth.
Yeah, so I, I'll get that too on that one.
We're gonna be having a ceremony. All right, let, let us get back to you on the date for the walking tour.
Well-
All right, yeah, get back to us and then I think, let's, let's, we'll shoot for, how's this? Between the, finalizing the dates a little bit and whatever else, we'll look to launch, but let's call it the right beginning of February, like sometime the first week, fifth week of February.
Yeah, I think that, that'll give us time to work out the kinks.
Yep, okay.
Okay.
Great.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Good, thank you, have a great evening.
You too.
Bye, bye-bye.
Bye now. Okay, now we have um, the conservation board, are they in person or virtual?
They should work, I think they're- Some of them are, some of them.
Good night, everybody.
Bye, buddy.
Good night.
Good night.
How are you all?
Good morning. Really spread. We are going to need more chairs, just to get a couple of them here.
Oh, I'm sorry. Hi, how are you?
No, I'm awesome.
They just have a lot.
We're sitting here?
I think some of them are.
We stay back there, so.
Okay.
Do you want to start?
Well, no, but you can sit by, um, I'm sorry, one of the others, who's here?
Um, nobody, it's Dennis.
Sabrina, yeah, Dennis.
Yeah.
Yeah, so just-
Pull that chair out while I do this.
Do that?
Yeah.
Great.
Pull that chair?
Yeah, I have to.
Sure. Take that and this.
Yeah.
Hello.
Hi.
Okay, well, we have our conservation board here, welcome, it's really nice to see you. I think what we'll do is go around the room so everyone can know who's here and who's on. Um, Karen, do you want to start as chair?
Um, Karen, yes, I'm chair.
Karen, yes, I'm chair. Nice to see everyone.
Nice to see everyone. Um-
Close to the TV.
Never seen that happen, never seen that happen.
Maybe someone's online with their volume.
Maybe someone's online this time.
Hi, I'm on.
Can everyone mute themselves for a second, can everyone mute themselves for a second? See if that's all right with you? Everyone mute themselves?
Just because it's echoing in here, if your volume is on.
Yeah, it's not though.
Okay, stop.
Yeah.
Okay, great.
So if you're not talking, maybe just, maybe we can just put you unmute.
I thought you were gonna have to unmute one at a time.
Okay, Karen, welcome. We'll go around.
Derek is on the screen.
Yes. Derek?
Hi, Derek's on here.
Hello.
Angela?
Angela, hello, we can't see you, I don't know if that's intentional, I don't know if that's-
Intentional?
Hi, no, I'm just driving, so I can't really do much with the camera.
Fair enough.
Okay.
Fair enough.
Yeah, I'm listening.
They say, they, they say.
Thanks.
So we're still echoing, is everyone?
I think it was Angela's.
I think it's-
Angela, are you able to mute?
She's dead.
Okay, great, great, thank you. I'm Sue Meany. Hello, Sue?
Victoria DePede.
Hi, Victoria. Okay. And uh, Dennis Corrali is here as a-
Hi, I'm the environmental coordinator, I also call myself the Lorax.
He does, he speaks for the trees.
I do.
And you have a shirt, I've never seen that shirt.
Yes, they uh, they got us clothing, thankfully. I hate shopping, so the very next time, I'm gonna get some.
We, we just, we decided that we were gonna claim them and that we would honestly be responsible for them. So we put down Newcastle on, on their shirts that they, they look like they've overlooked us.
Thank you. Thank you.
So, thank you for coming, so we're here to discuss, um, sort of a reassessment in your opinions on the, the board's mission statement.
Mm-hmm.
And other projects that the board is involved with, um, for the town. I know that over time, the mission was very, was narrow and that over time, you've taken on quite a lot of project and responsibilities that are all absolutely wonderful. But we, we want to make sure that you have clarity on where you're going and that we have a, a slot for everyone and everything that we'd like to get accomplished. And so we just want to see what makes sense, especially from your point of view.
Um, so, okay.
First, before we go into that, one question we all had was, um, regarding applying and who is technically on the board. Um, Sue had applied, I think last year, for it to be reinstated. And she still hasn't heard back. And Angela, I don't think is technically on the board at all. Um, and, yeah, because, oh, Angela is, okay, great. So Sue is not and um, I guess John Garfunkel has sent in an application. So it's just curious, who organizes, who reviews, I mean, how does that work? So we get applications?
Okay, yes.
And we, if we have vacancies, we forward it to the supervisor. Um, we, um, we got a little bogged down on boards and commissions. And I know with conservation board especially, we sort of hit the pause button because there was a lot of discussion as to mission statement.
Yes.
And before we appointed, if we were going to change the mission statement, it seemed only fair to make a determination as to what the conservation board was going to be doing and what their, their goals and objectives were going to be, before we interviewed people to see if they were good fit or if it was even what they were interested in doing. For example, the conservation board, as you know, is the trustee of over a hundred thousand dollars of dedicated funds that can only be spent on the Glacier Observatory, only spent there. And I can't, nobody else can dictate these funds, only the conservation board, that's the terms of the trust. And we don't have anyone who has any interest in that, so the money has remained unspent.
So that one's, we don't have anyone who has any interest in terms of-
Any, any interest in projects or, or we haven't received any, yeah, any-
Oh, for sparkle?
Yeah, I'm not sure what is gonna be there.
No.
Yeah, well, no, so- Well, two things, but first, just to correct, Sue's been on, I think, she wasn't sure where she was not reinstated. I mean, technically, she's been on the board.
Mm-hmm.
So I, you were just, she was just concerned about that, that's why I brought it up.
Right, so we're just getting-
It's all on my- Oh, no, 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 just, just, and then the only reason why I raise it is, is because there, there was discussion about changing the mission of the conservation board.
Yes.
So before we appointed people to a mission that wasn't in keeping with what they applied for, we figured we should work out what it is that the conservation board wants to be and- Yeah, no, that makes sense. I mean, going to Glacier first, um, there were two things actually. One, we've been waiting uh, for quite some time, removal of invasives. I can't recall exactly, it's been like quite some time, I think somebody was hired, a firm or something, whatever, was hired, um, but has not done anything. We don't seem to have control over that. Yeah, they were only hired to, to low. We, um-
Well-
So that happened, uh, block, copy, paste, there were two entities that were hired and approved. So that happened, uh, block copy paste, there were two entities that were hired and approved, the first one didn't fulfill.
Okay.
Onto the second one, don't ask me why it hadn't happened, it was a, uh, it was a mow and there was, we had some sort of additional scope agreement.
You're right, we did.
For for a hand pull.
Yes.
Because for whatever reason, and Steve Coleman had said the same thing, this narrow band of mugwort just wants to be there, it's like very frustrating, so
Yes.
we had agreed to them to try to attack that as well.
Yeah. And they just didn't show.
I.
Did we pay them?
Yeah.
No, and and this is the second entity, it's the first one didn't fulfill, so we got a different landscape firm and.
So. So.
Wait, can we, I'm just, I just wanna do a reset for a bit, because I just wanna establish what we're doing here and the Conservation Board really has a a huge, uh, plethora of projects that that you're responsible for, so I don't wanna get into the weeds of things.
Okay.
Um, and get into conversations that would normally happen within a committee. Uh, so I just really wanna stick to the mission.
Okay, sure.
And the structure and, um, and I I don't wanna cut off conversation, but I just wanna suggest that we try to stick to that, because there's so many worthy topics like this that we can get easily sidetracked.
So I just mentioned one quick thing, I think one of the benefits of what Jill just brought up is the lack of communication. That if there's any sense that we don't wanna be working on Glacier, but we've had so many discussions about it, so one of the things we're gonna talk about today is communication, so that we can make sure we're all in.
That's good too, yeah.
Yes, yeah, so to begin with, with the mission statement, um, we've been talking about it quite a bit and looking at what other towns do in terms of their Conservation Board, in particular, we were pretty interested in what Bedford has done with their mission statement, and I think that from our conversations, looking at the mission statement as it sits right now, it doesn't really reflect some of the current environmental concerns. I mean, when it basically was enacted in the seventies, the biggest concern was open space, which still is, we still are very concerned about open space and we don't want to neglect that part of our mission at all. However, what is lacking and sometimes what happened, there were too many projects that kind of occurred, there was no direction about what is our role in terms of the community, in terms of outreach to the community, we certainly can't do a million different projects and events. But we were thinking, perhaps we could add that to our mission statement that we'd like to, you know, uh, reach out to the community. And perhaps over the year, a couple of examples would be maybe, and I'm thinking because it's political, like a town hall kind of meeting about what, you know, why we have a tree code, explaining it, trying to educate, not mandate, just educate the community about what's going on, because a lot of them really don't know. You know, they come into town, they don't have enough time to look at everything, and they may like to know about the different conservation issues we have, so that's one thing we're talking about in terms, we don't wanna go too far, we don't wanna be imbalanced and only do projects, we have other things that we need to do, such as Glacier and all of that. Um, I think that that is probably also raises the question of communication. We need to have better communication with the town board, now we have Holly, and she will be, I think, very helpful, and we'd like to like direct, instead of just scattering our question, direct them to Holly, who then can communicate them to whomever, so it's a lot more organized and one person kind of is the funnel, and then it can go to wherever it has to go, for instance, a quick example, Glacier, hey, nothing is happening, who do we talk to, how do we have, we didn't have that, so we didn't ask for it, so we're asking for that. Um, also, if it's possible, maybe being on a distribution list, if you have one, of projects that may be coming up, so that we might know ahead of time if we have any comments about conservation issues or anything like that. Um, we wanna make our mission statement more twenty-first century. So, it definitely, climate change is a big problem, how does it affect us? What can we do in terms of what do we look for when the town board or the planning board or whomever is looking at a project or whatever it might be, obviously, the planning board is gonna look at certain things. But maybe we have issues that we may see that we may not be part of the planning board necessarily, or what they're doing, but we can raise certain conservation issues. Does that make sense to what I'm saying to you, do you understand?
Yeah, I mean, that's consistent with your mi- with your mission, with the actual original mission.
Yeah. Right. Right, so that's what we're trying to get back to. I think in terms of community outreach, perhaps if we did something like the town hall, we might find out from residents, hey, we're really concerned about something, again, we can bring that to the town board.
Right, I mean, it says here clearly, you review applications received by the town board, building department, zoning board and planning board that seeks to use or develop any previously listed open land. So are you, where are you reading that? This is the, your original mission, I don't know though.
This is, it's not what's on the website.
Have a reference.
Yeah.
Um, nice to have this reference, but we haven't reviewed it.
It's on, that's helpful.
Um, which.
We're two groups.
They may not have to be here.
So there are, we have the lovely one, the paragraph mission that is on the, on our site, which is the one that we've referenced and the one that we
look to today to revise.
Right, yeah.
So here, would you like to see?
Yeah, so, so.
It's, I'm pretty sure it's the resolution that came out of the town board.
Ah, so is, so so what's on the website doesn't technically override this, because this is by resolution.
That's our resolution, that's what we.
When, oh, the board, so this is the actual.
Isn't it possible for somebody to read it?
What's the date of the resolution last night?
Can somebody read it out loud?
Um.
I'm not sure if we have the time. Um, I don't know that we have the date, it just says when the Conservation Board was established, nineteen seventy-five, but that doesn't mean this is, that's.
That was eight, it was established by a resolution, I think that's the resolution established.
I don't know that, that makes sense, but I don't know that. Um, it could have been revised since then.
Oh, yeah, this is fairly interesting. It does reference nineteen ninety-three. So unless it was looking ahead of time.
We're not out to it, but what you were saying does kinda hearken back a little bit to this, because
Mm-hmm.
you know, we are acknowledging that applications and upcoming projects affect
Right, so that's a point, case in point, right.
your role, so this is.
Yes.
That's very helpful, thank you.
This is background to that, I think that's the.
Yes.
When we don't have to stick to this exactly, but.
No, but I, I think it definitely goes into, in the direction that we want to go, I think we feel a bit I hate to say, I don't want to say lost, but that directionless a bit, because, you know, we were kind of waiting with everything, first of all, COVID obviously messed everything up, and then everyone was trying to get back after COVID. And so we were kind of waiting to see how the boards maybe reestablish in terms of their roles, or, you know, how might, they might communicate with each other, for instance, should the Conservation Board and the Sustainability Board or even the Beautification Board interact? For example, we were talking about at our last meeting, the Beautification Board wants to plant certain flowers, should they be more conservation oriented, as opposed to you know, non-conservation, you know, pollinator pathway types of plantings, more than just tulips or whatever. Um, so I don't know if that's too involved, I mean, obviously, the town board has a lot to do and we're just one board and there are many boards. So we're trying to just find a way to be the most efficient we can be and really get some things done that are helpful to everyone in a, an organized fashion, which I think is the missing.
Those projects were organized under the Conservation Board, right, so we have, we have resolutions to sustain pollinators, we have the Town Monarch Pledge, Abity City, we're Abity City affiliate.
Yeah.
Um, we have pollinator pathways, we have a coalition, coalition for that, and so I know that you had someone on your, on your board
So.
who did a lot of education regarding that, during the events, and
So, yeah.
And so, is there a way to make that? Because I'm not sure where that, where that can be, you know, what the heading for that is, and
Yeah, so.
there has to be someone who oversees all that for the different committees.
Right.
Maybe subcommittee, I I don't know.
Yeah, so can I just jump into Bill and what Karen was saying?
Yeah.
So where, the the work that the Conservation Board has done, or the, I guess not this past year or so, but before that, when we had the full board intact, really stemmed from Steve Coleman's work, connecting our work with the Comprehensive Plan. So he literally went through the Comprehensive Plan, you know, paragraph by paragraph, and found the buckets of language that related to conservation, so what we did is we basically parsed through that, we came up with about ten different categories of related work, and then we assigned different people on the board to work on the different projects, so what you saw there was those folks who were specifically focused on the education piece, the native plant piece, so that became very tangible. Because it was very, those were very actionable projects, right, so yes, there was a category for open space, but there was never an ability to do anything with it, because we didn't have any funding, and there was no funding stream, so there were some that more naturally took off, and those are the ones you saw bringing the community in, so now we're at a juncture point where, you know, yes, we could still connect to the Comprehensive Plan, um, or we can also kind of, as Karen was saying, modernize what we're doing. We don't even have climate change in our mission, and yet that's, a lot of residents come to us and they're wondering why we're not doing more about climate change, about education, about, you know, what people can do themselves. Um, so we we really, when we've been talking about what to modify, we've been thinking of actually putting the words climate change in, right, the reason up open spaces in there is because, you know, thirty years ago, whenever this all started, that was the buzzword, that was, you know, there was funding for open space, and there was a means to do that, so now we're thinking, yes, we wanna continue, if you think about buckets, we wanna continue the open space piece and talk with you more about what the funding streams are and how we can really try to get to the point that we can save some of the, the few acres that are still remaining here before they're sold off. Um, and then we're thinking in terms of other buckets, we wanna rebuild that education piece, to Karen's point around the outreach. What is the education piece gonna look like, and maybe get some funding to bring some speakers in, there's an amazing speaker in Pleasantville, who's a professor, um, he focuses on climate change and trees and forests, and he's has done a roadshow in almost every community except ours. So we should be bringing him in to educate us, inform us, he's, he's fantastic. Um, so to have some education piece, and whether that might also include a town hall, ways to get information out to many of the new residents, right, there's so much turnover in Newcastle, and as Karen's saying, a lot of folks don't even know where to begin. So if we could give them a roadmap, a conservation roadmap, or introductory sense of when you move to the country, what are some things you wanna think about in terms of climate change, in terms of conservation environment? Um, and then there's almost like a policy piece too, this advisory role, right, so how do we serve you as your advisor? Right, if we are, if you're bringing people onto the Conservation Board who have both an interest and maybe some kind of expertise, how would you look to us to glean, what are the best practices out there? To Karen's point, you know, Bedford is a great go-to community, because they've done so much cutting-edge work, where we, Newcastle used to be the cutting-edge town around conservation and the environment, and we kind of have lost that over maybe the past ten years or so. Now Bedford is really on the cutting edge, they have Bedford twenty twenty now, Bedford twenty thirty, they do a lot of great work, they do actually conferences and all kinds of stuff, so.
Well, I'm a little bit competitive, so I think.
So you're not competitive edge, right?
I'm sorry.
Can I just finish, yeah, just, I just, I'm almost done.
Okay.
Um, so maybe we do look to them as an example of education and policy, right, so the same way that the SAB has done amazing work with policy, right, they've come to you with the relief law legislation, they come, came to you with the plastic bag legislation, really great work, especially around sustainability. So if there's a Sustainability Board, where are the Conservation Board, climate change, et cetera, so we could be and should be, you know, we go to meetings and, you know, looking for best practices to come to you and say, here's some really cutting-edge issues around climate change, around environment conservation, we drafted something, look at it, what do you think, you know, start a dialogue around maybe things that we could implement in the town. So there's a policy piece, and then the only final thing I would say is, to Karen's point, that communication piece, how do we come to you, how does Holly give us, keep us posted around specific applications? So there are gonna be applications that come before you, that we would love for you to share with us, so that we could give you the Conservation Board perspective before they get further along in the process, so right now, we've been feeling like we aren't necessarily given a heads up, and we would love that. And then how do we work with the other boards, um, also building over Karen, you know, how do we formally figure out, is there like a time at the Beautification Board and the Conservation Board, and the SAB can co-op, you know, work as a coalition, work as a, in a collaborative way? So these are just, you know, I kind of see the bigger buckets not getting into the weeds, to your point, Nikki, but how do we kind of come away from this revising of the mission statement to get to some of those pieces?
Um, I just wanted to say, going back to the projects, there were a lot of projects at one point when there were more members. The problem, quite frankly, I thought at the time, was that there wasn't enough funneling to one entity to see what we could do and what we couldn't do, and the projects kind of overtook our central mission of the open space, we kind of ignored it because all these other things were going on, so we, the thing with Bedford twenty twenty, Bedford now twenty thirty, is I I may be wrong, but I remember quite some time ago, that that's a separate kind of entity, it's a whole kind of nonprofit, because I remember when I was in case years ago, getting my masters in environmental, that was a big thing, and so we're not really equipped for that yet, we may try to envision something like that, but I don't, the Conservation Board is not as big and not as well-funded as twenty twenty or twenty thirty.
Right, I guess I only mention that as an example of a town Conservation Board working with a group, so if our Conservation Board worked with the Newcastle Health Earts, with Newcastle, in other words, there's, I just mentioned that because it shows how proactive their Conservation Board is in working with those.
But I think it was actually Bedford twenty twenty that actually kind of got conserva, I think they were, they started and then the Conservation Board kind of followed along. So what I'm saying, it's for us, and that might be a great thing to establish and chappicle off separately, but for us, we do wanna involve the community, and it's missing from our mission statement. But we just have to be careful about how much we take on and how we do it, until we have more members or more funding, that's also important, I think.
So if I could suggest, you know, I I think it might be a good idea for the committee to propose a revised mission statement, I think, you know, if you need some direction from us here, I think we could definitely provide that.
Yes.
Um, and then, and then I think from that point, if you have a revised mission statement that we can re-adopt or whatever the necessary steps are, um, then I think you'd be in a good place to say, okay, so this is the type of work, and this is the type of funding we'd want, and this is the type of membership we would wanna reach.
Right, and because I think part of this was, we certainly couldn't come with a mission statement this evening, because my question would be, how does the town board see our role? How do you, what is it that you're seeking from us, having the town having established the Conservation Board, what do you see our scope to be, because it needs to be something that we talk about together, we can't just say, we wanna do five different things and well, maybe you don't want us to, you know, what is it that the town is looking for? How does it best help everyone in the town, so that's why we need to, you wanna, we wouldn't assume to just tell you, oh, this is all we're gonna do, we can't do that.
Yeah, and so for my, my two cents, I I like the idea of increasing education and outreach in the community as part of your mission.
Okay.
Regarding open space and conservation, and educating on relevant policies and legislation, like you mentioned about like the, I think it was the trees, the tree code.
Yes.
Um, and kind of, I, you know, figuring out what that space is that you wanna be educating in and informing and advising us on, but I'm definitely opened, you know, keeping the open space, I think is obviously there. Maybe the Glacier Arborery needs to be in the mission statement if it isn't already, because I, I don't have that one, so.
It's actually in. Right, I don't either.
So what, what also. Yeah, I think Holly really, um, hit on a few of the good, you know, major points, I think that referencing the Comprehensive Plan is important, because that is a major map of where we're supposed to go, and a lot of work was done on that, and it's, and it's very thorough.
Yes.
Um, and it's probably one of the best comprehensive plans around, right, so, um, I think that it's important to to hearken back to that, and I wasn't around to see how that was done. So I'm curious about how that that was working, um, and advising us as to policy, I think is one of your major, major roles. And then, once you have all the initiatives in place, then the education piece comes in, because we know what we're educating about. So I think that's the order of things, you know, make sure that you are, we're adhering to our goals, which aren't static, by the way, you know, but goals, policy, and then education, then communication over, you know, is part of all, all of the above. And I think, Victoria, those are the things actually you hit on.
Vicky, thanks, my dear. Right, I was just, you made me remember that we now have a natural resources inventory, right, so we've always, we've had
Yeah.
the the beautiful Comprehensive Plan, and now, you know, thank you, Dennis and team
Yep.
um, did a really great job on the natural resources in in Detroit, we can look to that for guidance and counsel also around some of the focuses of the. We can look to that for guidance and counsel also around some of the focuses of the policy and, and education.
And the glacier arboretum piece, I mean, that's a heavy piece for communities to carry.
Yeah, un- unfortunately, I can't change it. Um, it did, the way, the, the way the money was donated is specifically earmarks the conservation board. So they are literally sitting on a hundred and seventeen thousand, five hundred sixty-five dollars in forty-one cents. Um, that we get written up every year from our auditors saying, how can you also pay back to this?
Do you need, do you need help with that? I mean, do you need, um?
No.
Well, my point is.
Well, well, Dennis is here, Dennis is, Dennis, what would you like to do?
Is, is, I think the expert, um, we've got.
I have money for you.
Marie Mall rehabilitation, no, I.
But not on you, Dennis, not not to put all this on you, Dennis, it's mine.
No, but I.
My point is that we have expertise here.
I mean, even the invasive work, we would love to, now, we, maybe we should find another vendor who can help us out.
And, and now is actually the right time to find the vendor. I, I have to say that, that when we found the other vendors, just the very brief background is, uh, we took a, a piece of property that we had to maintain. Um, and we piggybacked because they were in close proximity to each other, it was on Heath Cross Road. Um, we, uh, we were able to piggyback the care, but it was more than the gentleman, I think, was able to take on in the middle of the season. We don't own the property anymore, thankfully. Um, but that, that was the vendor that we were using because even we couldn't maintain the property that, that we took.
Is that forty-eight Heath Cross Road?
Yeah.
That had the conservation D, DEP?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Right, so we don't own it anymore, um, it's in private hands. But, um, um, yeah, so that, that was the vendor, but, but we have monies, clearly we have monies to bring somebody in, maintain that front, um, walkway area so that it's more inviting, make sure it's clean on a regular basis. Um, take care of the invasives and build some trails through the, I, I'm, I'm, I'm a speaking. Not trails, but like boardwalks over the trails because they've really, they've suffered from erosion and, you know, they're quite the trip hazard.
Right. Like. You know.
But, you know, bridges, there's all sorts of wonderful places, I think.
You might want to consider when you, when you reassess what type of membership you want, is maybe trying to find someone who has a particular passion for the glacier arboretum.
Well, we did have that for a while. I mean, but I think part of the problem was we didn't know who we should go to, to make sure. At some point, you think it's beyond your, you know, influence and somebody else has now taken it over.
I, I don't think you're going to have that problem anymore.
Right, so that'll be great because we can come up with ideas and see how to enact them. One thing about money that I would love to touch on for a quick minute is the open space fund, which we're not sure when there's going to be money in there, i- if there will ever be any money in there. Because obviously, one way to fund it would be something that really we can't do. Bedford was able to do a little tax levy, but that was before the cap.
Yeah.
It was built into their budget, so now, from what I understand, it would be very difficult for us to do.
That fund was set up for donations as well? Or bor- or borrowings, although I, I don't think that.
No, I don't think so.
I'm sorry, Bedford, or?
It would be hours.
Hours, um.
Open space fund?
Yeah, I mean, I recall it just for if we had excess funds.
If we had excess funds.
What did the, yeah.
So we were wondering whether actually it could be, we were talking about that, could there be donations? But maybe that gets complicated legally, I have no idea.
I, I think it's funny.
Um, you know.
Yeah, but it's a, it's a same question.
You're not, I don't think you're going to be able to combine those, though.
Yeah. I mean, the other thought in conjunction, like with establishing open space would be maybe an educational piece about advising people how they could really, for instance, get money from the DEP if you're in the water, should and they're willing to give conservation easement. I mean, I'm sure as many people may know about that, but others may not. I mean, that might be an interesting thing, hey, does anyone have any, even in town hall about, we want to preserve whatever open space we have. We're trying to figure out ways, you know, of doing that. Here's one way, if you're willing to do a conservation easement, you could sell your development like, development rights, all those kinds of things. That would, I think, be interesting because it might be a way of achieving some open space without spending the money. The other problem that we need to understand, because this issue has kind of come up recently, is what kind of open space does the town want to accept? Do they want to accept open space that has potential liability? They want to put, that kind of assessment is something we have to think about.
Yeah.
Um, for the required ongoing maintenance, as we know, from the dam.
Yeah.
So not all open spaces created equal.
Really, well, yeah, that was, that was a very expensive lesson.
And some open space, and some open space is just going to remain open space because nobody can do anything with it. And I think that's been talked about too. I did go look to see if there was any open space in RIM parcel available, nothing.
Yeah, Karen's been very good about this. So e- every year, we end up with a, a list of in-rim properties, properties that are offered for sale because there's outstanding taxes on them and the owners aren't interested in paying and they become available for the town to take them. That's actually how we got Sunny Ridge Preserve and the Mickle Dam, unfortunately. Fast forward twenty years and it seemed like such a good idea in a lonely place. Yeah, you know, fast forward twenty years, it ends up being a high-risk dam. It take, you know, we are in the midst of deconditioning it, it will be over a million dollars to be deconditioned. We have to then take and restore it to its natural habitat. Thankfully, Dennis has been instrumental, along with other staff in the development department, uh, about securing funding for that. So we, we've really locked down in that regard, but boy, what an expensive, um, free piece of property.
That was very well.
Well, I guess to answer your question, Karen, I think that's, um, a good hypothetical question and I guess depends on you, your initial assessment and then you would bring it to us and then we would make that decision.
Yes.
At that point, it's kind of hard to give an answer because there's, every piece of land is unique.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, so it would have to be based on everyone's ultimate assessment and analysis and all that.
Yeah, no, I, I would.
So if you identify something, then bring it to us. And, and by the way, we can accept bequests. It's ninety-one dash three D. Um, the town board may also accept and deposit in the open space reserve fund.
Oh.
Other funds.
That's great. Oh, okay.
As may be received through private gift and bequest or otherwise available from any private or public entity or agency.
So perhaps we should reach out to the community and create a little
Ninety-one have a little.
Whatever and say, hey, you know, did you know, we'd be so happy if you wanted to donate any.
There's a town hall.
Hot topic, right?
Yeah.
I mean, to the town hall. But, um, you know, it makes it, you know, anyone can say whatever they would like to say. Um, so I think the communication thing is really also, obviously, you've got a lot on your plate. But we'd love the ability to, like, almost like a follow-up doctor's appointment, you know, kind of follow up on maybe a monthly or bimonthly basis, quick meeting with the town board to see where we all are and what you'd like, you know, how we're working together.
Okay.
If that's possible.
But we're always willing to meet.
But I know, you know.
Maybe targeting March, would you, this time?
Um, yeah, I mean, I would say if you get started on the mission statement and we, we can look at that, then that might be a place where we interact in, but we'll see if it works with Holly as your liaison, we could go back and forth with that.
Yeah.
And whenever you need to come back to the full board, we're always, always accessible.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
That's perfect. Um, does anyone want to add? I think, actually Sue had had an interesting, uh, idea about glacier and the pond, correct? In doing some planting.
Well, what we talked about was, um, to use this as a starting point, um, like, uh, to plant, well, first of all, to clear out like vines and all kinds of, you know, things that we can't even name. Um, and, and try to get the, you know, we can't do the whole place, but we'll try to work around the pond to do that. And, um, also, um, plant native plants, um, native trees, native plants, native shrubs um, in that area to make it look appealing and, um, and, and see how they grow. If they grow, we can put them in other, other parks. Um, so it's kind of an experiment, but, um, it, it seems worth it to do that because and, and, um, so that's kind of what I was thinking. And, and we had the money available, as you had mentioned, with over a hundred thousand dollars. Um, so we, we would have the money to do the funding, um, to do the plantings.
I think that's a fantastic idea and it's realistic, it's doable, relatively easy, you know.
More than it takes a lot of work, I understand that.
Dennis, what about all the planting that you did in the beginning, in, in the front of the park? Like, were those all natives that you put in there?
Yeah, they were all native trees and, uh, I'm not pleased that the summer of twenty twenty-two, I think, did a number on the, the red maples. Yes.
And maybe we should have.
So, yeah.
So, yes, they do.
The, the, the two years of drought and then the, the year of, you know, Maureen and anybody can handle it.
Exactly.
Yeah.
So you know about the glaciers.
She loved climate change.
Yeah, but so I think that's a, a great way to start.
Yeah.
Dennis also came up with another great idea.
Exactly.
No, I, it, we just walked around with, uh, with one of the summer interns and, you know, we took some photos and, you know, part of her project was a go over a presentation as to maybe where you could put sort of just like additional meditative, just sitting areas, just, you know, because it's true that, that, you don't really have that.
Oh, that'd be long. Because it's a truly beautiful place.
At, at glacier, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And just be able to sit, you know.
Yes.
Exactly.
I'll tell you, I've, I've watched the glacier arboretums many, many times and almost know it by heart.
Oh.
But I lived right there before, so I would go there quite a lot.
Yes, there's a couple of them.
And there are so many places that are nice, would be nice to sit in. A lot of streams, oh, yeah.
It's the balance of, hey, this is, it's always a conservation question. How do you find that balance between keeping it pristine? So one of the beauties, beauties of glacier is that, yeah, there aren't a lot of benches for people to sit, the, the nature really lives there. And so how do we find that? We've talked about this a lot on the conservation board. How do we find that beautiful balance where we can have those spots without compromising the natural environment? And there is potential there, we just have to find the right spots.
If you can find the natural spots and maybe highlight them, I know there's a spot
Dennis?
Um, towards the beginning of the trail, um, I think it's on the blue trail where there's a not cropping, it's a rock that comes out there and it, it looks like a seat.
Mm-hmm.
And you could just hop on and sit, sit on that. So I just wonder if there are spots like that around that.
Very organic in the communities.
Organic, yeah, does not have to be a bench necessarily. Would you really have to walk that?
It would be nice to have, I think, something to think, I mean.
Makes it more accessible.
It's a lot higher, higher value, I guess, you know.
Yes, because people.
Tell you, the, the, the extending the boardwalks a little bit, making it a little bit more, be, be, because it's a combination of erosion, um, natural erosion from the, you know, from water runoff and just use during COVID that the trails, that, you know, the, the rocks and the, um, the roots are just so exposed.
So maybe what we should do, kind of all, like the ERB is a field trip. Maybe our next, whenever we can get out of the snow, go on a field trip and kind of take, have an assessment, take, just assess what are the things we need to do here? Um, I think that might be a really good thing for us to do because it will focus us on our mission of open space and focus on funds that we can use and really do something that would be really nice for this coming spring, summer.
Mm-hmm. I hate to sound like a conservationist, but the beauty of having this fun money is we can do that and then bring in an expert who can tell us if we pick these six spots to have a bench or to have somewhere to sit, to have increased flow and people to use, right? Is that a good place to pick in terms of nature? Is this going to interfere with, with a breeding area or a site that, you know, is a really rich habitat? So I just think we need to be sensitive to those because, you know, the difference between us and the rec commission, right? The rec folks are very kind of park, traditional parkers. And our, yes, there's definitely a venue diagram overlap between parks and sanctuaries. But right now, that's more of a sanctuary and so we want to keep it as, you know, that, that beauty of being really natural.
But you have the dogs then, so I could tell you that a bench is going to be less impactful than, than in Kansas as a team.
We want the dogs.
Yeah, and people.
No, you're right.
No, one thing about the dogs, and I have a dog, I love dogs, but I have to say, when I've been there, sometimes I'm frightened by a dog that is off-leash and I don't know if the person has that dog under control, you know, um.
Parks and Rec was just talking about the leash, like, last thing.
It's an old park, it's a, it's a.
And it just, I find it a little frightening because I try not to be afraid. And again, I, I love dogs, but maybe the dog's having a bad day or does it like my smell or whatever, you know, like my dog's mouth, I don't know.
It does look.
Or my dog, yeah, my dog starts, it's gonna be six and a half pounds, so it's good for me.
Yeah, it's a, it's such a, it's a problem in every.
So is there anything we can do about that, you think, like, education?
Education, you know, enforcement, and just the, maybe a sign.
We talked about this in Parks and Rec literally last Thursday.
A sign at the front of each park, be considerate of your neighbors.
It's frustrating for everyone. It's frustrating for Ike who maintains our fields and then you have people letting their dogs.
Yeah.
And then they're fenced in, the fields are fenced in, they pick their dogs up and they put it in.
Mm-hmm. Wow.
Are you kidding?
No.
It's easy for them to control.
Yeah.
Obviously.
Wow.
That means we need a dog park.
Okay.
It's a separation.
The grow, the dogs on the arms.
Yeah, they're grown, they, yes.
She has fed fruit about two.
Talked about that too.
Yeah.
I don't know about that.
But, um, so should we ask Eric and Sandra in case? Garrett, would you like to say something?
Yeah, I think we veered way off course here and gone way into a rabbit hole we don't need to right now. Uh, let's, let's get back to the task at hand. We need communication, right? We need communication back and forth. We need to know what you guys are working on, what involves us ahead of time, not after the fact. We need a mechanism where we can bring things to you and we can have a, action. And, uh, a lot of what has already been said, I'm reiterating, but those are, I think, are the main points that I want to talk about is how we have better communication. We're made aware of things that, agendas or proposals or things that might involve the environment that we can weigh in on.
And Karen, I think you and I are the, are the key to improve that.
Yes. So if we need, for instance, an example of the past, poor Jill, I'm like, right, she's, she can't take control of everything and no people would have projects, but at the last minute, I need this. Well, we need to be more organized about that and we need to have one place to go and everyone knows we're getting the tables or the chairs or whatever and it's not like all over the place in a craziness. So that kind of occurred for a while and that is a problem that we need to solve so that we're all.
Is that, I, I'm sorry, I don't follow that one completely. Is that like at an event you guys have?
Well, it just was hard because people would pull, be pulling together things. I mean, many times Sue had to bring her own table and tent and everything and
Oh.
you know, and it was hard because we need to find a way. And the funding, if we want to do a project, we need to know, is it realistic? Can we have the funding, how much funding is allotted for us? You need to have notice of that request. Um, same thing goes with glacier. I don't know how much notice you need for something like that, how we present it to you. Do we have to get, we've got an expert, do we need to have two other experts telling us what their fee would be? Can we choose one or, you know, I'm just wondering.
Yeah, so you, you would just let me know how much somebody is.
Okay.
I can let you know how, how it falls within our procurement policy.
Okay, that's good, because that's something I, we need to know.
Usually a speaker is in covered by that. We, we do, don't usually have speakers that cost thousands of dollars.
Okay, I just, it's a good thing to kind of know what we can do and what we can't.
Is it useful for us to come up, and this is really compared to other boards, to come up with our annual goals for the year?
All right.
Yes.
And then also.
Yes, yes.
I do have a budget. So we, we do have a budget, we do our budget, we just, yeah, we started in August.
We have a budget that might.
So, so maybe, that's, now is a great time.
Okay, so I think that's a good, good place to start, so.
Okay.
You know, work on your mission and maybe statement of goals and then I think we can take it from there.
Couple of projects.
And plans for pleasure, that's one thing to start on, that's a fair trip.
Yeah. Yes, that is a part of it, yeah.
Okay.
Right, yeah, I, this is a great, good, good start, thank you.
Thank you so much, thank you guys.
Thank you, thanks for giving us so much time, we didn't know how much time we have, so this was very generous.
Thank you so much. Yeah.
We appreciate it.
We appreciate it.
And thank you for this.
Yeah, that's good.
We had to give this.
I know.
It lives in the corner.
Dennis, can I? Maybe I'll make coffee for someone. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Alright. Thank you, Dennis.
Sure, thank you.
It was me for a short while. It was Ally for a short while. Chris. It was on conservation, I don't know. It's, it was, it was.
I'll talk about it.
I'm gonna run to them. Can we take a, can you put us on a five-minute, five-minute break, please? Well, sorry about that break, everybody. So we're back and we're going to get started on our goals. But, um, before we do that, we did discuss a preview of our goals from last year. And those are detailed goals, but I'd like to take a few minutes to discuss some overall goals. And this is something I wanted to do at our first town board meeting, but we. But we were cut short by the weather and then the following town board meeting was canceled.
Canceled.
So this is something that I uh had planted at the very beginning of the year. And I wanted to say that a lot of us were are newly elected to our positions. And four out of five of us, but I think Holly is um, you know, very much aligned to what we talked about during our campaign. So I just want to be um accountable to the things that we we talked about during that time. And there were several categories. Now, it was an uncontested election. So we didn't uh go around quite all, you know, a lot like people usually do. So but we had um campaign literature and we had gatherings. And so I just want to be accountable to that. And of course, we did promise to have represent representative and responsive government. And so I just want to reiterate that even though we ran on a party lineup, we are here for absolutely everyone in town, regardless of affiliation or thoughts or uh philosophies, we are here to represent everyone. Uh, I just want to say that as with any incoming supervisor, I will go on a listening tour, but I just want to be transparent and let you know that I will be talking to department heads and chairs of advisory boards and committees, um stakeholder groups in town, like the police, C V A, fire department, C C S D, libraries, Chamber of Commerce, et cetera. And I will be seeking feedback from them and um we established a relationship with one of the biggest stakeholders in town, which is the C C S D. Uh, we will be having engagement sessions for public lands and you just heard um in pretty good detail how we're going to to be doing that. Uh, and I I would like to say that for any zoning that we do, whether it's for public or private property, that we will be engaging the public before engaging in zoning. Um, I will be setting up office hours and coffee meetups and maybe some members of the board would could join me at times for that. It doesn't have to be just me, but could be up to two of us doing it without it being a board meeting. Um, now with regard to transparency and accountability, there are practices that I want to reinstate. Uh, the board used to get quarterly financial reports and I I want that to be reinstituted. Uh, it's important because it it allows us to assess our financial performance based on our budgetary goals and um that is the work of our town board. It may seem worrying to some people, but this uh this is our work and it provides a kind of transparency and accountability to the public. And also I'll be reinstating quarterly project updates. And that allows us to assess our performance on our board goals and their connection to grants and other opportunities will keep us on track as to actually what we're doing. And we'll keep the public on track. Oh, we will be looking at the website. We're not going to to be doing an overhaul of the website, although I wouldn't want to um rule that out, but that's a huge job. But we will be doing a little bit of a refresh. And I'll be working with Carrie Crams to do that, just to make things more accessible. Um, maybe we'll put a communication task force together. I'm just now I'm just talking a little bit off the top of my head. Uh, but we'll see whether communication task force makes sense once we start changing things on the website so that we can have people with an objective eye look at what we're doing and let us know from an objective point of view whether it's working for them and what they can access or not. So, okay, so I hope I'm not scaring anybody on staff with that. Um, on a on a really serious topic, um I want to talk about building community and a sense of belonging for everybody in our town. We've had so many issues regarding hate speech, discrimination, bias. We've had people who have felt attacked. We've had our youth be targeted at school events at times. We have had people tell us that they're afraid to come to meetings and they feel unheard. Um, that happened a little bit last year and I I don't want to ignore that. I don't want to want us to proceed as if none of that had happened and ignore it. So um like I said at other times, we can't resolve geopolitical or national political issues here and we're not going to do that, obviously. But we want to build an environment where we feel that as families, neighbors and friends that we can connect to each other, that people can come to our meeting and should not ever be afraid to come to public comment and talk to us. And so the question becomes, well, how do how do we do that? And the way that I think that gets done is that we engage in the authentic work of building relationships. And so what I I'm going to be starting will be small group meetings with just a few people at a time, just to start. To have like-minded people come together and start small and start to establish relationships. And I hope that that's something that's that will grow and uh make that a reality. And I think that we need that, we need that not just in our town, we need that in our country and our, you know, we see our world is falling apart a little bit, so let's um bring a little bit of that here in Newcastle. And hopefully we can expand that. Um, so then one of the other the things we talked about during our campaign was smart, sustainable growth and protecting our environment. So I think that we've always done that in Newcastle. But I just want to make sure that we continue uh do giving due consideration to protecting our environment. And we've heard that also today with the conservation board. It's a priority. Uh, we want to incorporate green energy standards in any kind of development and we want to take our infrastructure needs and limitations into account and we'll work with the S A B conservation board, Climate Smart Task Force, to ensure that we remain at the forefront of climate smart initiatives. And uh the final thing we talked about is to increase arts and recreational opportunities. So we will work with Park and Recs and we will bring back the Arts and Culture Committee. So we're really looking, Jen is going to be the liaison to that. We're all looking forward to that. So just to recap, um, of our first hundred days, I will go on a listening tour. We will be planning for the outreach and structure of engagement sessions on zoning of town owned lands. I will collaborate with community stakeholders and start with an I M A with the C C S D. Um, we will give our website a facelift. I will start on what I will call a unity project. And we will fill a lot of our committee vacancies, including reestablishing the Arts and Culture Committee, fill the C R E I and reestablish the Airport Committee. So that's just a little bit of a synopsis of the bigger vision and goals that I have to get us started for the year and I'm excited. And uh I think we have a great team. So we can get moving. Uh, I don't, do any one of you want to opine on any of that? I know it's a lot. You don't have to. Okay, you don't have to, like.
Did you want us to share some of the goals and objectives we come up with too?
But we're, okay, so now we're going to do that based on um the ones that we were talking about two meetings ago. And so we can do that. We will definitely go around the vision and do that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So let me um, do you want Maureen to post um? Can you post the?
Yeah, the
Twenty twenty three with apologies to um Holly for being Holly McCall instead of Holly McCall.
Holly.
Holly or Long.
Or Holly. Shawn, you know it's the Holly in that.
Yeah.
It was on the paper, I had to.
I'm so sorry, not notify.
But check doesn't work when you write in all caps, so I'm so sorry.
Or when you use an actual word.
Holy is a word. I know, yeah.
I did. You say a cap. No, I I did. You let that one go?
She liked it.
Yeah, I know.
I just told her today, but don't worry, I I.
She's my point three, that's why she tells me, great.
Yeah, I didn't miss it.
Yeah, funny about that, yeah.
Okay, so.
Jen noticed when I when I got her middle name wrong, maiden name wrong as well, so don't worry about that. It happens.
Okay, so I'm thinking about the best way is to go around that, do we? Do we just, do we, so we have all of these categories here, then you don't have to take any of.
We're we're not, right.
You are, you know, are you you're not bound by, there are some things that the that staff is doing when it comes to infrastructure, water projects, sewer projects, need to have things staff is doing. Even if your projects overlap with us
Absolutely, yeah.
and you decide that, you know, you'd rather do something else, that's fine. We're still taking care of our need to have items. So.
So maybe we go by category and then we'll
Take a quick survey.
Oh, so actually, maybe the categories that you just outlined, um, I think those might be the the right buckets to have the discussion in.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So let's see. Well, we have this chart here, so I I just want to make sure that I'm not sure what you mean because the categories that I outlined are pretty broad.
Okay. Right, but I think that what we can do is identify the projects that are either already here, the projects that we have in mind as priorities um under each of those buckets.
Right, okay, that's what I'm going to do. So so, yeah, no, that that's, I think we were saying the same thing.
Okay.
Just a suggestion, but I think it works. Yeah.
I'm just going to go according to these categories that are here and then we can add
Mm-hmm.
to it if we have other ideas, but let's just cover these first. Okay, so we have infrastructure first and I think that that's something that the town is working on.
Yes.
Already, all of our infrastructure projects that are in place.
The customer.
Right, so, yes. Is it worth, I mean, there's quite a lot. Yeah.
I mean, it's just a whole objective, it's
We It's there, so
It's like it has to be done.
It has to be done, so we're going to continue to that, that's a priority, right?
Yeah, so even if the Yeah.
Even if it has to be.
Even if no one on the board identified for it, we do this.
We're still taking care of it.
Okay.
Water relining, water main replacements, um
Safety.
uh, you know, piggybacking with the county on the sewer extension. These are all things that we were already involved in and 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 we we've got on our need to have list, so. Okay. So next we'll go to zoning.
I just wanted to take a moment too because that was the first thing on, I think last year when we came up came up this, I was still kind of green, so I spent a little bit more time thinking through and you talked about infrastructure structure projects, but also budget updates. And I actually had that on my, making sure we have a handle on all of the projects, but making sure we also have a handle on our budgets and where we are and if we think things are going to go over, if we think things are under or having things shovel ready in case, I know it will never happen.
And so it'd be such a good thought.
But having things shovel ready in case there's grants opportunities, um, you know, what
Yes.
having an eye toward things that might be, we might be able to apply for grant monies and then also maybe more opportunity for us as town board members to sit in on department meetings and having regular meetings with department heads, just so we could be updated. I know you mentioned that, that was something I had to you know, just like having a better handle on what's going on, when things are coming up. Sometimes these meetings feel so rushed and like making sure we all have the opportunity to understand the full scope of a project and the full scope of the budget too.
I I have to tell you that that this is something, you hit the nail on the head, this is something that's been missing for the past two years and Jeremy's gonna notice that it was missing because we used to do it and we didn't do it over the past two years. So traditionally, Rob and I would come in to the town board, we would set aside um a meeting once a quarter and Rob would give the full financials. But we used to basically give the board an update for every project of what we would go with. Like Vicki's comment was, you know, how 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 is the board going to get a handle on you know, the sidewalk project where we are, on the Millwood sidewalk project where we're on this. Well, when you get quarterly updates and you know exactly what's happening with each um project, there's no mystery to it. Um, and that's something that, you know, the it wasn't prioritized over the past two years. It's being brought back as a priority and I think it's really going to serve the board well. Like, I I think that it's tremendously helpful not only to the board, but it's tremendously helpful to the public so that they understand what exactly is going on. Um, and it's not just, you know, the downtown infrastructure project, not stuff like that, but all the projects that we're dealing with, um.
And we want town staff to have a clear clear guidance from us too on what we think our priorities should be so that they know, so they're not spinning their wheels that way, right? We want all be on the same page.
Without, without question. Without question.
Well, I think you also need historical knowledge of what projects have been attempted, because how many times every election, every year, we need more sidewalks?
Right.
Every election, every year, we're going to do Douglas Road or we're going to do, maybe.
Yes. Yeah.
Jill's mind, it was easy, it would be done, right? I always go back to that.
Yeah.
But not already seeing that we talked about.
So so people have to understand that as much as we want to, they also have to sometimes understand it's just not going to happen.
Right.
And fortunately, there's turnover, that's the nature of things, that people come and people go, but and things do change, but the a physical environment doesn't necessarily change. Rocks are rocks and setbacks are setbacks and
No, I
That's right.
people have to understand that sometimes it's not going to work, but we spend money and then spend money again, sometimes doing the same thing and it doesn't make sense. So we have to all be on that same page and that knowledge, we did that already in two thousand eighteen.
That's right. Right, you know, that's right.
Yeah.
And the more often we talk about it, the the more or the faster, you know, when we're green, we get caught up. Um, you know, if it doesn't get discussed, we don't know what's happened in the past.
Right, and not only does the board know about the historical context, but the public doesn't either.
Right.
So, you know, they come from, more often than not, people are moving up in the city and it's the one thing that you sort of take for granted when you live in the city is that you can walk every place. And you come here and you just can't.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
And it's just, it it's one of those like sign differences that you don't appreciate until you're actually here. So, yeah.
It's true.
We'll be doing this, no reason not to do this, so.
Good.
Definitely.
Okay. Great, so let's move on to zoning, if everybody.
Yeah, so um
Mm-hmm. Zoning, we will be doing town on property. Um, North Greeley is on here. I noticed that um last year I had put that in. It wasn't a priority for anyone else, although we definitely did something there.
Yeah, I'm not, I I don't know that where the checkmarks ended up weren't necessarily um not there because someone didn't think it was important. It was maybe because they didn't list it as
Or of course.
Why was it all zoning? Was it just too many?
It was all, yeah, all zoning, right.
Yes, that's what mine was. Mine was all zoning, so.
But since North Greeley is here, we should talk about that because people have asked us about that. So I think I'm open to hearing about this. If we do zoning on North Greeley, I would like to do engagement sessions for that as well. I think we can do that in-house though. I don't think we need we have a lot of information on North Greeley. I was Sabrina, but was here. But also we have fifty North Greeley going up, which is a huge project. So I wonder if it would be you of us to kind of see where that's going. Right, before we make more plans or we we just don't know if we're going to get proposals for North Greeley that may come in.
Do we have the application for that one yet? Is they still?
So. Not yet.
Okay. I don't know that we should ignore it.
No, uh, we're not going to ignore it.
For now, I I think we should talk.
No, 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 wait, so let me clarify what I'm saying. We're not ignoring North Greeley, but rather than jump in right away, let's see what the application is that comes in, let's find out where where that is. Um and I I would just like to get a handle on exactly what their timing is and what's happening there.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, but I think we should keep a close eye on it. And when we do the um the engagement sessions for town owned land, we'll get an idea of what people want and how, and then we can see how that can interact or interface with North Greeley.
I'd like to.
Because everything, everything is connected.
I mean, I'd like to keep North Greeley on our list. Um, even if, even if there's nothing active, we're going to start in the next two months, I I'd still like to.
Absolutely.
Yes.
And we know that the next step is going to be, I think, would be site plan review, right?
Yes.
That would be the next thing and I think
Go on fifty fifty north.
Fifty North Greeley, right after the app, after we get completed application, it'd be site plan review. And I know we've all talked about just wanting to get
Yeah.
the Architectural Review Board, Planning Board, whoever else, like working together, having, I thought I thought when we had our joint meetings with those boards, when we were able to work through issues, I thought they were really effective. I thought it was really helpful to get professional advice. I think that's how we get the best end product and, you know, learning from past mistakes too.
Okay, I mean fifty north, I mean, North Greeley is definitely on our list because of fifteen.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay. Um, is there any anything else that people are seeing under the zoning category?
I
I think all of that, you know, the remainder affordability, it, I mean, that's part of the zoning.
Yeah, I mean, I feel like housing, housing is going to keep coming up and whether it falls
It's it's just part of it.
under zoning um as a narrow project or if housing in the community is something that we should be looking at maybe more broadly, like.
As a good concept, do you think?
Yeah, do do we have gaps um in the in the needs in the community? I mean, for example, do we only have like a part, I know this isn't true, but I'm being extreme here, but like we only have apartments, we only have mansions. What's missing? Um, and then that may, some of that's probably in the comprehensive plan, but I think that we should be thinking consciously about housing and how housing and how we wanna proceed as we start thinking about zoning and what do people want to see on town owned land, um I feel like there's, to me, there's a big bucket of housing, including affordable housing and whatever the governor may be starting to think about again. It's it's gonna come back in some other form, um and I I'd like us if we can be somewhat proactive thinking about what we want, I think.
Well, it's a patient, we have to just wait.
Well, that's that's the point of the, that's the point of doing doing zoning work and doing engagement sessions with the with the public.
Right. Of that.
Mm.
But that's that's for a narrow area though, I I'm thinking of housing across the entire community.
But if it's not town owned land, I don't know how much, like, you know, how we're mandating that, right?
Zoning's our tool.
Mm-hmm. What do you mean across, well, across the community, do you mean residential areas?
Oh, I mean, do we think we need more housing in Millwood? What, if if we do, what are our
Right. Well, we talked about that, we talked about that, I mean, we need we need sewers, we don't have sewers in Millwood, you can't do anything in Millwood with sewers.
Where where are gaps there?
It was a one we don't touch.
Right.
And
Mm, yeah, yeah. Well, you can't do multifamily in
That's all. Well, yes, I don't mean that we can't do anything, right, but
Yeah.
Yes.
It's I don't
I guess it's just like the recycling of of the issues, you know.
Well, I I and I I don't mean it specifically like saying that that is what we need, but thinking about it from a housing first perspective
Mm-hmm.
and what the needs are, rather than a solution first, like this project.
Oh, holistic approach as opposed to just
Yeah.
peaceful, yeah.
Yeah, well, that's that's, I guess that's what we're talking about with zoning that
Yeah.
Yeah, I I always I always assume a holistic approach when we're talking about zoning, I I don't
I think that was a tool, but
I don't see us doing what we did with Fifty North Greeley and I guess we all know that was not my preference, I did not think we should do zoning for one parcel of property. We should have looked at the entire area um as a whole to see what worked for for the neighborhood, not just one building, but you know, I I voted for the project because I didn't want the housing itself to be penalized because the process was deeply flawed. But um you know, my view is always to do things um in in a comprehensive, you know, in a, I don't wanna say comprehensive, I don't wanna trigger ideas, but in 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 a holistic way.
Right, not spot by spot.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I mean to sort of piggyback on what you were saying, I think if I'm hearing you correctly, what you're talking about is keeping housing on the front burner like keeping it as a top priority, something that we're thinking about as we go through this envisioning process and maybe beyond the envisioning process.
It housing.
Yes, both. I reserve judgment on that, I'm very curious to see what comes out of A's Nexus public outreach, and I am very cognizant of how the community has voted on this topic in the past, and I think
Uh-huh.
we need to just be careful. I'm not saying we shouldn't consider zoning in housing, I just think let's see where where the community outreach falls, I mean, let's see what the input is first on this project, let's ensure Fifty North Greeley is a success, and as successful as that is going to be, because I think that will determine the excitement in the community about future projects, I think if we do a good job on that, and we work together and we make sure that the community is engaged there's more opportunity for future projects.
Yeah, I I don't wanna get ahead of the community right now, we are having engagement sessions and the whole point is to see what people feel, so if we're gonna come out
That's right. That's how I feel.
come right out of the chute and say well, we want housing, I think that's putting
I didn't say more, I didn't say any, but I didn't say necessarily that I want to put more housing or any type of housing, I think it's
What we want ahead.
just thinking about housing, um and do do we, are we set up to do what we want and need as a community for housing, are we anticipating what might come down from the state level um and doing what we can do without waiting for a hammer to come down, I guess.
Right, well, well
It's it's the, it's a, so I mean that's, I mean, I'll I'll stop on the housing topic now.
Yeah, I I think like, I'll I'll finish, I'm sorry, I I think that's fair what you're saying, and I think we have to think about it, we have to think about what we're doing in terms of
Okay.
Yeah.
doing the outreach, I will say, I met someone on the train who lives up in Chapua Crossing and he was a local resident who moved there and so he sold his home and then
In one of the new ones?
In front of the new, he did it in minutes
Okay.
and I I don't think he had any kids anymore, but I mean rephrase that, I don't think he had a kid in school anymore, um but he loved it he loved it, he's like, I could go out and I could walk to Lifetime, I could walk to Whole Foods, I could walk that area
Yeah.
and it's only coming and the person next to me is retired, and the person is, you know, is pregnant, well, you know, is pregnant. And I when I think of that, we're not getting too far ahead of ourselves with this outreach that type of walkability we're talking about, that access, train, transportation the hamlet, we're sitting on this on this vacant piece of parking lot that could be grand, amazing, spectacular hopefully that we will get that insight from people sooner rather than later, so the steps can be taken because it's such a resource, such a resource that we're we're actually using on.
Right.
I'm just saying, let's take it one step at a time.
Hundred percent, we can't bite off that.
We're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna get feedback and we'll see where people are and and what they want, yes, yeah.
Yeah.
Hundred percent.
Okay.
My favorite.
Let's Okay, sorry, my computer went down, um okay, sidewalks.
My favorite topic.
Yes. I think
So so actually
I think everybody, everyone loves, yes, sidewalks.
Everyone loves sidewalks, alright.
They all want what they can have.
We've got
Now, you know, you say that, don't be, don't be defeated.
The challenge.
The only thing I don't see in this list is one seventeen which uh we got a request about, um
Right, so um yeah, so so
that piece of road where people are walking regardless of
Of the fact there is no sidewalks.
of, there there's not not only no sidewalk, but there's no room to walk in, it's 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 a danger.
There's shoulder. So like it's by Chapua, it's Chapua Ridge along one seventeen to the bicycle shop. Basically, what they're trying to do is just hook onto the, get to the where the sidewalks are, which is right by the mobile station and
Yeah.
you know, down past lanes and you can walk into town there, no problem, and you can walk up to um Mathel School, no problem.
Mm-hmm.
So um so two things that are sort of right after the goals and objectives, but um so our original Millwood project was for the sidewalk on one seventeen. Um and it didn't go anywhere because again, the state required such significant takings on so many properties and they're all village homes, which means that they're, you know, modest properties, quarter acre or less and when you're taking significant chunks of their property and bringing the road that much closer to their homes, it's tremendously impactful. And so um
And it's a taking, not an easement.
Right.
I don't feel for the board for that part.
Yeah, so um yeah, that was a, that was a big deal, the the community didn't really want it, and so we were able to actually salvage the property, salvage the project um and we moved it over to Millwood, and we are inching closer to DOT's approval through real estate. Um we just got uh uh one of the um green lights to, it's very slowly makes its way through, but there is some movement on that project as well.
When you say once that it was once further one seventeen, this is the same one you just mentioned between Chapua Ridge and like the bike shop, or was this further north?
No, no, it was um I'm so bad with directions, um it was a little bit further um beyond
Towards the high school or towards Pleasantville?
No, it so it wasn't the high school route, so it was in between like the firehouse and the high school.
Okay.
It was where they're talking now, where the bicycle shop is in front of Chapua Ridge and further down that way.
Okay.
So
Yeah, I live right now, that's where I can see the people walking all the time.
The DOT
All the time.
Yeah, the DOT is requiring ten feet for a snow, snowshoe, snowshoe.
Right, five foot, five foot snowshoe, five foot sidewalk, and actually Jen had raised
By the barn. Right.
Yeah.
the issue of, you know, is it possible for us to ask DOT for a waiver?
Yeah.
Um it is a small section of um of one seventeen that we're talking about, um I mean, we could try to do it in baby steps, and we could try to take an, issue an RFP, get some engineering and see actually how much of takings it would take from, I think it's four properties.
Mm.
And see what's involved, um and then go to DOT and ask them
Would they leave?
Yeah.
Right, do we feel locally that we need five feet for a snowshoe?
Do we have a say in the matter?
We we don't, it's a it's a DOT road, it's a, you know, one seventeen is the state truck route, and this is what they're asking for so that there's someplace to put the snow so you can imagine if you get a three foot, you know, snowball, which we forget all the time, and who knows this year, maybe we will again.
Right.
It's just a matter of just clearing up a spot to clear the snow off the road and make sure that there's, you know, a buffer between where that snow is sitting while it, you know, is stored.
Or turn around.
Yeah.
I I would say it's more than a nice to have, it's really a need to have, it's a safety issue at this point, because people are actually walking there
Mm-hmm.
and we have to be realistic about it.
And there are kids walking, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
There are kids walking, so I think we need to stress that when when we ask for variance.
It is, it's not just a bill.
And the other thing I think we can mention is is that as CCSD has built this fence that I know Lino is still on, he's he's promised me some sort of determination, but we had easements active easements that went from town owned property into the schools, into the elementary schools and with the fencing around CCSD for security, and I I have no bones with them about that, it's just that kids used to walk.
Yeah.
Now they don't have a safe way to walk anymore.
Ah, yeah.
So, you know, as you are
Right.
shutting off one safe access, it really is left to us to try to provide another safe access.
Mm-hmm.
Have municipalities ever kind of addled with DOT over this? I mean, we can't be the only community where this is becoming a a safety hazard.
It, yeah, and I I think it's been a a constant safety hazard, but it's also, you know, they've got their own liability and um you know, they've gotten more and more stringent over the years, it used to be an easement, now it's a taking it used to be that, you know, if you take a look at this sidewalk in one twenty, you see that it meanders.
Mm-hmm.
Um it actually lit left trees along the roadway and sort of went back and around and came around again, you worry it wasn't a straight sidewalk right along the roadway, they would never allow us to do it.
Oh, that's
But but if they are getting more restrictive, I guess my question is, are municipalities pushing back? I mean, are there lawsuits, for example, I mean, is Not not that I'm aware of, we we certainly um we we are lucky in that um our representative Chris Berg has a wonderful relationship with DOT, and so I would do the RFP, I would give them all the all the information we possibly could, and you know give it to them and ask them to help us plead our case with DOT, and I'm sort of helpful, hopeful that in light of the fact it's such a short area
Right.
and it, the ten foot would be so impactful to these, just to answer the phones and the overriding social, the public safety
Mm-hmm.
as a benefit, that maybe they would see it our way.
Yeah. Like I appreciate what you were saying, Jeremy, about how, you know, we talk about the same thing over and over again and we should stop doing that and accept the community, and it keeps changing, and new people keep moving in, and it's the same topic.
It's actually talking over, I think that's more spending the money over.
So why, why
Yeah, yeah.
It's why, why we need
It's not working.
Yeah, but like we know the end result is going to be the end results.
Right, not talking, more spending.
Yeah, I mean, it just, it, I I've lived here for over twenty years and it's constantly what people are talking about, I mean, for twenty years, I mean, the same topic.
You have to draw a line, and if it was easy, we would have done it already, or if it was possible, we would do it.
Right.
Mm-hmm. I know, I I just mean, I'm sure it's right.
It's just, well, I mean, we were, we were
We can keep talking, we can keep talking, we can definitely keep talking about it.
Yeah, we just see We we
Everybody wants to do it.
Uh
We love talking, yeah.
That's why we can be crying.
Our, listen, we would
Yeah, okay guys, so let's 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 move on, let's move on.
Thank you. Um
Um
We do need a gap.
Yes.
She may need to go.
So we have the the other sidewalk areas, there's a chapline, the one twenty extension and the west storage Genny to Millwood, and those are pretty much on on the way, I don't foresee us not pursuing that.
But I thought chapline was paused because we didn't get the grant monies.
So
Right, so we just applied again for the grant money and we're waiting.
Right. We're just continuing, okay, to move on, so
Yes, we're continuing to move on.
It's in the
Um so let's, so let's, we can move on now, we have the next top, next category.
It's a, it's a big yes, okay. Oh, we, so does that mean that uh the board is in favor of the EDR proposals for the one twenty extension?
Yeah.
That's in your package?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Um the rec master plan, we we've accomplished that.
Mm-hmm.
I see here turf on Upper Genny, um I think people are asking for turf, it it's very difficult um in the wet seasons, which is now almost closed.
Our fields have a lot of terrain issues.
Fields are always getting closed, um I would add, looking at turf in town, like if we're doing town owned land, it would be so great to have a turf field in town, we could have nighttime games you know, Friday night games in town, that would be so great for
That's tough, yeah.
um our merchants and
Was there
Just bringing people in.
a resolution on Upper Genny, turfing Upper Genny, does that
Was resolution, the the, one of the many problems with Upper Genny, and you 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 mentioned one of them, which is the drainage, which we always knew about, um the good news is is that if we were to bubble it, or even if there were lights up there, we wouldn't disturb any neighbors.
Right.
But the issue is access. So it's got a very limited parking
Right, you have to park.
accessibility, right accessibility um that grade would never be acceptable um for an access in bad weather. So it's just, it's the sight that that's a problem.
Don't don't we close the gate at night, is there a close back at night?
We we, right now, we we do, but if we were to have an all year round facility there, then we would have to do, you know, full lights through Genny, I don't know how we would control it exactly, but it it's not it, it's not as easy as as you
We see people parking down below and walking down that
That's what what we need now, yeah.
Then walking out, but
We're not doing that at night in the city.
Right.
Yeah, with the ice and the snow and everything else.
Would it have to be bubbled if it was turf? No, not necessarily.
No, no, and maybe not, but even if it it wasn't, you had lights out there, you know, bothering your neighbors, still great, but you still have the parking issues
Still a parking issues.
because you wanna be able to use it in the, you wanna be able to, I mean, to put turf there and not be able to use it, you know, in November, in December.
Yes.
Well, then but you then you also, if you have a place that's not monitored, like somewhere not in town you have the issue that I know the schools have dealt with, where someone wants to use the field, so they go and they just shovel it and they pour the water into it.
Yeah.
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 So I mean, I think it's
I can tell you that, yeah.
you you have to, you have to choose your location carefully.
Yeah, um I I think down here would be a far better location.
I think so.
You know, we've got the basketball court, we've got this amazing uh playground, we've got the the baseball field, somewhere like that, we we already had impervious, ton of impervious surface back there.
Absolutely.
It it would be the perfect location.
Yeah.
Maybe that's an idea for us.
And we've got, well, without discussing too much going forward because we're doing this outreach there's always also been a conversation about moving the rec field to the playground, pardon me, to the parking lot, and if you have the structure there, and then you can
Yeah.
then open up the rec field to something else.
Right.
And there's so many things, and this is what hopefully we'll learn from this and
Yeah, I mean, the one thing about the rec field now is, I think the, one of the problems would be that it's not exactly competition size.
Right.
So
So the small, so the soccer.
So yeah, I mean, so hence the idea of looking at another location for the for the park, so I think uh hopefully we can all think out of the box during these engagement sessions, people will look at the space
Yeah.
and be creative.
There might be other rec needs also.
Yeah, pickleball courts.
Right.
Yeah.
Our commu- community center, you know, and
No worries, they're getting, they're getting mass center.
Yeah. Yeah.
An indoor, indoor basketball.
But there will be, there will be pickleball nets at the, they are painting or have already repainted the line, so there will be pickleball there.
Yeah. Like, I agree.
Right. Yeah, so it sounds like we don't
need turf being a field on this list.
Yeah, I I think I think it's premature.
It just happened to, it just happened to
See what happens with the
Yeah.
Somebody
Up there.
Upper Genny is not really feasible, and it sounds like it's premature to talk about this field, given the visioning.
I think she burned our conversation on
Yes.
Well, I I think let's let's keep turf on on the list because we
Yeah. Turf a field.
A field, I would say, a field.
Okay.
Um, okay, then we have public movable art, so I um
Yeah.
I still love that idea, I I I think we should
I love it too.
pursue it, it was um originally it was getting artists to do um
I couldn't get money for this.
um murals, and that ended up being expensive, and then someone had the idea of having it be students and having it be movable art, I wasn't on the on the town board then, but I remember
Well, I think I'm confusing, I'm just confusing, I thought this art was, come on, where I got confused.
It it was the project that uh that you brought in.
Yeah, yeah.
Public art movable art.
So maybe there was two different ones, and public art was, it was twenty-five thousand dollars per wall that it was, if you recall, I mean, you may not
I wasn't on the board, but I was paying attention because I I really liked the idea.
Yeah. If you have professional artists from like all over the world, you have a theme, and they would find public spaces to put this artwork for example, underneath the bridge, for example, on the um side of town hall, town hall, private property too, but it was just a, it was twenty-five thousand per, right?
I think it was twenty-five.
Twenty thousand.
And the thing is that people move on from themes, and it's expensive, and
I think
We have a lot of talent to
It wasn't, it wasn't that kind of, that would be like a uni- a universal thing, the
I
Yeah.
Universal, yeah, um
It's a But we, we have a presentation somewhere.
I I I'd actually love to see like, that would be something like arts and culture is looking into, is like what type of public art is it, is it fit
Yeah.
And who do we have in town? Who do we have living here?
Rather than artistic.
Yeah, I mean
Might wanna
I I I I thought that's where it was going.
I I hope whoever's listening, and if you have a bent toward the arts, you know, will consider getting on that committee because
I I hope whoever's listening and if you have a bent toward the arts, you know, will consider getting on that committee because I'm hoping that the art and culture committee looks at fine art, music, you know, dance, theater, you know, just all the arts. And um you know, I have tried to reach out to artists in town that I know of, but I hope people who are interested in the fine arts will get on the committee and and help find talent in the community and also outside the community, but especially in, cause it's exciting to celebrate who we have here.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
Right.
You know.
And and I think it would be great to have these decisions made by more than just us five board members, because it's a community, so
I agree. Yeah.
at least going to the committee will bring in more people and more ideas, more excitement.
Yeah. Yeah, more enthusiasm and just celebrate that aspect of our town and our community, you know.
Yeah. Yeah.
I agree.
And um I'll just put it, put out one idea. There are a lot of, you know, when we have vacant storefronts in town, maybe they got pop-ups. Like maybe little pop-up art galleries, um could use those spaces for, you know,
I love that.
Mm-hmm.
I think pop-ups are good because they create interest.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Just a thought.
Yeah, especially at certain times of the year, you know, artists like to hook their art forward.
Yeah. And sometimes they like to come out of the city environment and people like to travel and and take day trips out of the city, so.
Mm-hmm.
And.
But that that's for another topic.
Where are we?
Electric uh bus.
Electric bus, so.
That was a no, right?
That was not.
We've had a lot of trouble with the buses and, you know, batteries in the um in the winter.
We had a lot of.
So hopefully, the technology will
Yeah.
Right.
will improve soon.
You remember me, really quickly, just one thought that I when I see electric bus comes in my mind.
Um.
Not asking for a big debate on it, or people think it's the most ridiculous idea. But when we have these clean passes and they're going like hotcakes, right? I mean, everyone wants one because you get a good parking spot. You're putting the car, the theory that you want driving on the road, sitting in a parking lot all day, when your kids, spouse, their older car, or whatever, maybe their newer car, is driving around all day. It really kind of defeats the purpose. And I think it would certainly be unjust and unfair to say, we're just going to change that. But I think maybe the board would consider, maybe not, and I'm not educated enough on the issue, which we've done before. But to consider, for example, grandfathering those who are there now, but going forward and, you know, giving notice in a year from now. Again, I'm just making this up, saying, going forward, this rule and law is still the same, you get the clean pass. But it's the clean pass that goes on the gas, those that parks, and the clean pass on the car that otherwise wouldn't be parking is the one you're driving on.
That makes so much sense.
And.
So.
Everywhere you go, so.
Your gas goes.
Why not, why not, why?
It will be lots of.
Yeah, leave it parked all day.
We want that, we want them to be driving those cars.
Yeah, leave that one parked.
Yeah.
Right, so I, it would be unfair, you know, just change that now and say, I know who's made these investments, they lose it. But we could say, you could pass legislation that in a year from now, I'm making it up, you know, car, going forward, be advised that it's gonna be flipping, if your grandfather, your grandfather, but going forward, it's flipping.
Could this possibly be policy that you work together with the Conservation Board?
Or is that same thing?
SAB, SAB, yeah.
Maybe same thing.
How about would be our next initiative?
I'm sorry, the the town clerk is like flipping out over you.
Yeah. No, you just. I just, no, it's a great idea, but I just don't know how we implement.
Well, that's, I don't have the answer, because, well, you enforce it because you get a clean pass or your local clean pass sticker that would go on your other, another car.
I don't know.
Or enforce it.
Yeah, so we have people that peel them off and put them on their next only gas goes one. But we have, they peel them off from one car and they put them on their new car.
Don't do that, or it's a no. But we, but like, to conform this, right.
No, but from their green, from their green pass, and so what's to say that if we did give.
But if they're doing it anyway, they're doing, we can cross that bridge, right? Again, I'm not smart enough to know how to do that, I guess.
Yeah, that's okay, I imagine how we do that.
I I think overall, you know, you're reality testing it, I understand.
Oh, I want, yeah.
But but also.
I don't mean, I don't mean to drop, we shouldn't drop the mark.
No. No, overall, it's just drafting policy that incentivizes the behaviors that we want, want to encourage, so I think.
Right, right.
Yeah.
It's a good thought. I think you're on a good track. I'll just say that.
Generally, I I generally like agree a- a- about trying to find ways to incentivize people to
So, yeah.
Yeah.
use their gas-guessing cars less overall to be a good thing. Um so and you know, that may be one potential approach.
Mm-hmm.
But there may be other ways that we can go about it. In, some of it is sidewalks and making it easier to walk and connecting the hamlets, connecting the business.
Yes, well, that's the other aspect of sidewalks.
I I make.
It's not just about safety, it's also about the environment.
Yeah.
I mean, having people on their bikes or on their feet is just better for the environment, you know.
Yes.
I mean, I'm I'm all for like a a broader effort and I'm sure goes with SAB, Quiet and Smart is to try to figure out like, how do we have less CO two emissions, right in, right here in our community, I remember.
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
And we have less empty storefronts if we have a walk, more walkable park.
Yeah.
Yes.
We will.
But the SAB could do more education on.
Right. People know.
I I don't think that is.
But they do, they have a website and.
Well, that doesn't mean they should.
But I don't think. I I think that everybody really knows that, you know, that the electric car is putting less emissions into the town.
To. Okay, guys, I think we exhausted this topic.
Sorry.
Sorry, I don't, I don't, I feel a bit.
It's Jeremy's fault.
No, it was um. It's a good idea. It it's a good idea to incentivize the right behavior, and I think we should think about that.
Something hard to pursue it, yeah.
Um, the last, I.
Actually.
Cell service? Sorry, before we leave the electric bus connecting to Millwood, I mean, I think that there's still something there that's worth thinking about, even if it's not an electric bus. But but connect connecting the hamlets and the business districts, um.
Right, that's what we're working on with the sidewalks.
Right, and also, I I have to check with Sabrina. There had been an obligation um by Summit Greenfield to run a shovel bus
Mm-hmm.
from Chapel Cross Crossing down to the train station.
I think it's running again.
It is running again?
Yeah.
Yeah, because I I I.
I talked to him.
Yeah, because the guy actually rode on the train, he said it was running, but not at that time, it was a late train.
No. Oh, that's, I'm so glad. And do they only have one? Because now all those condos are going.
It's, but it's one of those school buses, it's a school bus.
Oh.
Yes, it's, yeah.
It's their contract to the child's team, and that's either school bus.
Yeah, we really want, yeah, because they they needed a drive, a driver, and this is what they had. Um when when is the electric school buses coming in? When do they have to have all electric, all school buses electrified? Did we approve that in New York State or no? That's like California, I think.
I don't know.
I thought they.
I don't know.
Ugly. There was a, there were a lot of incentives coming.
I just. There is a goal, I think, for the SAB, right?
Incentives, there are incentives, isn't it?
Twenty twenty seven, I think it's all completely.
Twenty twenty seven. Twenty seven, okay.
That's soon.
Yeah.
That's good.
Yeah, um.
That's a lot of infrastructure. I I don't know that they'll have the money to do it, but that's not, that's not our, that's not, not our area. I I I cannot believe that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, um but.
It's so unreal, it's like, we, impossible. They'll have to all bust the tax gap, it's impossible. Anyway, that's not for us.
Yeah. Um, but yeah, um.
Alright, so cell service.
Okay, let's let's keep going, we're almost finished. And then we're going to be discussing sidewalks, so I want to get to that. So cell service, I think that's a big issue for people. I mean, it's and it's an emerg, it's an emergency, it's a safety issue, we need cell service.
Sticks. Right, so Sabrina tells me that um she was given a um a map that she can actually take and superimpose on um like the town map and identify parcels.
Yeah.
She's first identifying town-owned parcels. We've actually been asked um by a local church whether or not their parcel might be um one of those that would be ideal for a cell tower.
Right.
Um, I can tell you that in Vermont, they hide um antenna in steeples or you don't see any.
Yes.
You know, any towers, they're all in steeples. Um and they, so they're not an eyesore, they don't bother anybody and we could really, it's one of the day zones. So I know that Sabrina's having a conversation with her.
I agree.
Wow, great, great.
In a couple of weeks.
Yeah, we conducted a survey, we got a lot of information, so like, I think we should continue on.
Right, as as what people would tolerate, would be when, yeah, so we're we're gonna be um, we're gonna be pushing forward with that.
Good.
Very true.
Yeah, okay, that's how it's great.
Okay.
All right, so we've exhausted this list. Does anyone have anything else they'd like to add?
I noticed on the comprehensive plan toward the back end, but um a discussion about safety um um regarding bomb threats and gun use and gun violence and um I just, I'm just wondering if anything that has been addressed at all since two thousand seventeen. And I do know that Moms Demand Action really works hard on education for safe storage and and other such things and I just wonder if the town has ever formed a committee or anything like that to promote greater safety.
Mm-hmm.
I I.
Historically, Jeremy thinks that.
I I I think we've had a committee, but we've discussed at times like local legislation, but most of it is preempted to by state legislation.
By the state.
He did only try to pass it on.
Yeah, we thought about, I don't remember what we were doing, but maybe it was a storage or.
Historics.
I mean, the the legislation exists already, it's about educating people, education.
We talked about it, you. Yeah.
Yeah.
The county did something too, right?
Ah.
Um. I don't recall, I mean, we could certainly.
Some sort of a note, some sort of a note or something.
If you save, yeah, which I'm sure the police would be thrilled to.
I can see it.
Assist it there. Yeah.
Yeah, I I think that's an important topic.
It's a good idea, I'm sure. Or you can do, I would have a pretty.
Sure. Yeah. Just turn it out there.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else?
It's no buses, school buses purchased to be zero emission by twenty twenty seven, and then all buses need to be electric by twenty thirty five. Oh.
Yeah, that's that's more, okay. But, yeah, okay. That's a date where everyone can say, well, we won't have to think about it.
Cause they've already done.
But, I mean, there's a whole infrastructure involved in doing that.
Yep.
Right.
Okay, so education around gun safety.
You don't, don't, I I want to ask one, I want to ask one thing. I've always been a a a a point of fixing somehow, if you could,
It's fantastic.
working well at one seventeen, because there's always overgrowth to cut it back when it can.
Oh, okay.
But but it's, you know, my wife, actually, someone hit her from behind, or tried, missed her from behind, hit that retaining wall.
Oh, that intersection, yes.
Uh, yeah, hit, slept because people come around the corner, not paying attention, they're going fast and standing there.
There's danger.
I have a near miss there at least once.
So, this is maybe a thing in CCSD that maybe you can help with and maybe where the resolve is, but
Yeah, yeah.
the property, the CCSD property that juts out and it it needs that retaining wall to cut it back.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know if they'll ever do that, because otherwise you can't move that, even if you cut the.
Right.
The the phone.
The the inch back, yeah. It doesn't matter, you can't see. So, and when all those houses come online.
I know that was the street I would turn on to go go to my house, so I I was well versed in.
Yeah, charging too.
Mm-hmm.
But when all those houses come online up at Chapel Crossing, it just need more traffic. And it's just something that we need to maybe revisit, maybe CCSD.
Mm-hmm.
Did they ever do the, we had talked about an engineering study there.
Yeah, I spoke, I spoke to the gentleman who was the DOT, I don't know if I can remember his name, for our region. Um.
Oh, uh, uh, Goff?
I don't remember what his name, but he basically said that it wasn't gonna happen, they're not, they're not.
Don't go.
They're not, they're not, but that's our life, they're not gonna cut back that.
Oh.
It's a, they they would have to like blast it or do like Jack Henry, it's it's a rocky out.
Yeah.
Oh.
Residents would love that.
Well, they they'd love it when it's on.
Anyway, just maybe just keep the conversation with CCSD again.
I hate to say this, but maybe the question is putting a light somewhere.
I don't know.
That would slow down the the traffic.
I don't know whether a light would help.
But the, if they.
That would help.
Those flashing yellow lights, right, kids, because they're they're covered in dirt.
But that's special. No.
Yeah.
But let's see, when you come around the turn, if there's three cars, if there are stopped waiting to turn.
But the problem is you're you're blind, and if there's.
You can't see it.
Someone's, I'm always like, if someone's coming.
You're gonna hit that. I stop way out all the time, yeah.
So anyway, I don't, I don't.
Okay, yeah, but um. Right, slide back.
My son is scolded of not having to have that placed.
Okay. Should we move on to sidewalks now?
Yes, so the two sidewalk.
So Jill, wait, so just to get back to the goal, so can you bring back at later next meeting, I just have a
Yes.
a new sheet, so that everyone could see the 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 final goals, if we've stated them.
Yeah. Okay. Yes.
To have a more organized view of it and everyone can can have a record of it.
Right.
Okay. Great, so um sidewalks.
Well, we've talked about the two of them. So one was the um EDR request, which is a feasibility study. It's just shy of ten thousand dollars and is to see whether or not we might be able to extend a sidewalk a bunch further. And again, you know, these are, they're challenging projects, they're along the New York State DOT roadways, but unless we've taken buy off small pieces of it, we're never gonna get the sidewalk. And ideally, we'd like to be able to extend the sidewalk over at the Warren Brook School, it would be such a nice thing for the scale of the walk there. Um once we dive to Warren Brook to be able to continue it over to the intersection with um one twenty to one thirty three, and then ultimately sidewalks along one thirty three and Getney Park into Millwood. Um but again, we're only gonna get there with bits and pieces. It's it's such an expensive, difficult proposition. So um if the board is willing, it would be um, it would be great for us to be able to see whether or not it works for us.
Okay.
And then the next thing.
Is that the one that we're hoping to piggyback with the trunk line?
Yes, and I'm still hoping to do that. We'll be asking the county ever so nicely.
Okay, yeah, then I think we definitely need to do that.
Yeah, um and the next thing is is that um is that one seventeen request, um neighbors walking along the shoulders.
Yeah. Right, we we talked about that.
Um. Yeah, so we'll we'll um, we'll take in and go out and try to secure an RFP for um uh engineering services.
Okay. That's good, okay, good. Administrative items?
Okay, um we've got retroactive payment claims from last week when the um I think it was due the other, another one is
Mm-hmm.
for tonight. Um we've got authorization to approve the annual contract for police uh voice recording systems. This is uh the police are required to um record all calls that come in. It's uh, this is the annual contract for the recording system. Um next is an authorization to reimburse I attend the New York State Bar Association um for state and local governments, which covers also relevant topics and I attended it this year as well. Um next is authorization to enter into an agreement with Auctions International. This is the only that uh auctions off our vehicles and equipment, but the town has a credit surplus. Um retain professional services. This is the water main leak detection. Um it used to be New York leak detection, now it's called something else and it's not quite as catchy.
Mm-hmm.
But uh they they literally drive around in the middle of the night um and listen for running water when they shouldn't be. And they are able to detect uh underground leaks um at a surprisingly accurate rate, and they save just hundreds of thousands of dollars. Um they're they're just, they're fabulous, so.
When you see a conversion van riding around at night, yeah.
Yeah, you you.
Yeah.
But the people.
Yeah, when when they go out, we actually, we we could have the newsletter so people don't flip out, because it's just like this slow-moving like box truck.
Don't fall off the box, right? Yeah.
Everyone's like, what the? Yeah. Um next is uh authorization to approve the scanning project. Um so this is a continuation of the development department who um has been able to uh do a fabulous job scanning all of our paper building department records um and preserving them digitally. So uh we're requesting another ten thousand dollars uh for additional files and we're really, really moving right along with it.
Right.
And that's all we've got for um administrative items. Um we, we're gonna open a public hearing.
Now, we, yeah, we're we're going to open up a public hearing, so.
And we'll open up uh local, public hearing for local action in chapter thirty-three and chapter ten-four regarding town prosecutor residency requirements.
Second.
Call in favor, can you say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, um, Lino, are you, um.
I'm here.
You want to. Sorry.
Sorry, we're not, we're not, we're not long, a long interval.
He's faking.
Sorry, yeah.
It's got pretty colored in its face.
Uh, we all appreciate Lino being here, he is not not well.
No, I'm not.
It's not still.
I'm not feeling well.
Yeah, I'm a feverish.
Um so we're, we're, so we reached a town prosecutor residency requirement. Um this was always, what I understand to have been the intention in the law and and um town prosecutor is someone with discretion in what the prosecutor and whatnot, and we've always thought that it would be a good idea for that person to be part of, a member of the community. Um Lino, is there anything you you would want to tell us about from law itself?
No, I mean, you already have a residency uh re- requirement in your code, so thi- this one didn't include the village, town prosecutor, so what this does is really just make the 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 town prosecutor a resident, so it's real simple tax amendment to chapter uh thirty-three of the code and also to chapter thirty, so it's two sections, thirty-three dash three and thirty-four dash three. So you have a qualifications and also residency requirement established. So those are the two where we added the town prosecutor.
Okay, that's it. So at this time, I'll I'll open it up to any public comments. I don't, there's no one in person. Uh is there anyone online who would like to make a public comment? Lauren, do you see anyone?
No hands raised.
No?
Okay.
Do you see anyone at all online?
Hands is people, hands is people.
Alright.
Do we wait thirty seconds, just to be?
Well, we're gonna, on, it's the board's intention to take in adjournment over to the thirtieth.
To adjourn and keep it open?
Hope to keep it open to the thirtieth.
So.
I guess so, because we don't usually do public hearings at a work session, so I think it would be.
Session, right, and it wasn't our intention to do that, we.
Yeah.
It was not, it's.
Yeah, so.
So um can I just go move it to the.
Yes, let's do that.
Yes.
Second.
Yeah, mo- motion, so.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm just making clear that we're making a motion to move the public hearing to the thirtieth.
So I, yeah, to adjourn to the thirtieth.
To January thirtieth, okay, Jeremy, move. Ali second, and all in favor?
Right. Yeah, perfect.
Aye.
Aye.
That's.
Okay.
Um we do have a couple of resolutions. Um, we do have a couple of resolutions.
Do we have anything extra other than the packet?
No.
No.
Not today?
No.
Thank you, guys.
We have ten, ten resolutions.
Um, but I I do just wanna comment that um um as the board pointed out, uh, we were not as pristine in our record keeping as we should have been with uh a number of um appointments to statutory boards. And as we slowly but surely work through those terms, we have corrections here. Um, so you're gonna see a number of uh clarification of volunteer board terms, planning board, zoning board, architectural review board. We've gone through them. We've gone through past resolutions to sort of figure out where we went astray and we've straightened them out.
These are people who are appointed or they're not made to appoint. We're just making corrections to the terms.
As best as we can. They're already appointed.
Yeah.
For example, there were planning board members who unfortunately inadvertently appointed six-year terms instead of five-year terms. Things of that nature, so we've we've cleaned it up.
We will, we will. Yeah.
Um, so um and we continue.
And. We will get back on track.
And they'll all get no notifications and clarification.
Yes. Right.
Okay, um, so Holly, would you like to start as usual?
Sure. I moved to retroactively approve the payment of claims in the amount of three hundred and twenty seven thousand four hundred and nineteen dollars and thirty three cents. Twenty twenty three expenditures totaling one hundred and forty one thousand one hundred and ninety nine dollars and fifty one cents. And twenty twenty four expenditures totaling one hundred and eighty six thousand two hundred and nineteen dollars and eighty two cents. List on the summary AP check register in detail voucher detail reports, all dated January seventeenth, twenty twenty four. Checks were printed and distributed to each payment listed on Wednesday, January seventeenth, twenty twenty four.
Second.
All in favor?
Lauren.
Aye. I moved to approve the payment of claims in the amount of one hundred and ninety nine thousand three hundred and one dollars and ninety seven cents. Twenty twenty three expenditures totaling one hundred and sixty thousand three hundred and seventy eight dollars and twelve cents. Twenty twenty four expenditures totaling thirty eight thousand nine hundred and twenty three dollars and ninety three cents. Listed on the summary pre-check writing report and detailed voucher detail reports, all dated January twentieth, twenty twenty four. Checks will be issued and mailed to each payment listed on Wednesday, January twenty fourth, twenty twenty four.
All in favor?
Second.
Yeah, all in favor?
Alright.
Agreed. I move to accept the retirement of Police Sergeant Nicholas Cosentino within the Newcastle Police Department effective January twenty seventh, twenty twenty four. The town would like to thank Nick thank Nick for his nineteen years of dedicated service. Second, enjoy your retirement.
Yeah. Thank you, Nick.
Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh-uh.
I move to accept the resignation of Sean Gonder from the position of community service worker within the Newcastle Police Department effective January twenty third, twenty twenty four. The town would like to thank Sean for his service.
Second.
All in favor?
Alright.
Aye. I move to authorize the increase in rate of pay for Lily Burke, who serves as a student intern within the court department from fifteen dollars per hour to sixteen dollars per hour effective retroactively to January first, twenty twenty four.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move to authorize the following individuals additional pay rates who serve as a recreation attendant. Uh, named Buna Jacupage from the Art Center at a rate of sixteen dollars per hour. Alex Lang is a ski chaperone and basketball assistant at a rate of twenty dollars per hour.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'm going to authorize appointment of the Lex Tru and Jordan Silver as student members of the State of Energy Advisory Board for a one-year term effective January first of this year and December thirty first of this year.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, so for therefore be resolved uh that this resolution, where's the resolution? It's off of all. Uh, hereby clarifies the terms as set forth by the town code of the town of Newcastle in relation to the statutory board being the planning board. Um, Walter Kirkwood, Chair, January first, two thousand and one, December thirty first, two thousand twenty five. Thomas Curly, January first, twenty twenty two to December thirty first, twenty twenty six. Conan Mara, January first, twenty twenty three to December thirty first, twenty twenty seven.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Gendra, please.
Be it resolved that this resolution hereby clarifies the terms as set forth by the town code of the town of Newcastle in relation to the statutory board being the planning board. Anthony Giardina.
I'm sorry, this is the zoning board.
Yeah.
Oh.
Sorry, this is this is.
Sorry, can I read it again?
It's just, it's just note it's a zoning board.
Okay. Anthony Giardina, Chair, January first, twenty twenty one through December thirty first, twenty twenty five. Michael Nolan, January first, twenty twenty through December thirty first, twenty twenty four.
Second.
All in favor?
Alright.
Aye.
And Jen, there's a mistake in the next one, so another ten. Dispatch board is gonna be the A R B, the Architectural Review Board.
Okay. Okay, be it resolved that this resolution hereby clarifies the terms as set forth by the town code of the town of Newcastle in relation to dispatchatory board being the architectural review board standing long July first, twenty twenty two through June thirtieth, twenty twenty five.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I think that includes the meeting unless anyone else. Anything else to say? Okay. May I have a motion? What's that?
I move to adjourn.
Oh.
Second.
All in favor?
Alright.
Aye.
We are adjourned.